All right, are there any additions to the agenda?
Administration has two additions to the agenda. We would like to suggest the addition of 5.10, the Recreation and Culture Cost Sharing Agreement with Brazu County, and 5.11, the ECDC Cost Sharing Agreement with Brazu County.
So we have 5.10, Rec. Cost Sharing Brazu County, and 5.11, ECDC Cost Sharing Brazu County. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda with the additions of 5.10 and 5.11? Counselor Clark, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, are there any corrections or amendments to the June 15, 2022 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes? No corrections or amendments. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the June 15, 2022 Regular Meeting of Council? Counselor Kamana, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, we are moving on to our decision items. We have 5.1, Agents of Change Program Design. And that is Aisha this morning. Good morning, welcome. I believe you are here for the first three, right? Okay, perfect.
I actually have slides because it helps to put everything into context.
Oh, perfect, yeah, that's wonderful.
Okay, so the Agents of Change project are just to let council know, we have already secured this funding. We get $15,000 to do volunteer programs, to establish a volunteer program where community members undertake projects that can help us to achieve our climate action goals. And the amount that we were provided is $15,000. We match that with in-kind contribution, venues if we host events, catering, stuff like that. And also, we have allocated that in the energy budget as well, just in case. But most of this will be contributed through the, oh, it's got, through the staff contribution, because this does take a lot of time to tell the truth. And the timing is also very tight. We were awarded this in March. We have been going through the training process the past couple of months, myself and Vernah from the library, because this is a collaboration between us and the library. And now we're starting the program design. So even though I just did this agenda item two weeks ago, we've just had so much progress. That's why this came up, so that I can give you the latest update, which is a bit more advanced than what we have here in the RFD. Okay, I think I covered that part. All right. So the program itself, like I said, it covers the hard costs of the program. And we were advised to have a recruitment phase, which we hope to do from July to August. And then when we actually launch the program, where we get volunteers to come on board and actually do the projects. We'll talk about the project part in a bit. What I do want to sort of get council's decision for today is the recruitment process, because for this, we plan to have a couple, maybe more, events with the library to just have people be more aware of what kind of local sustainability initiatives that are actually already being done by our residents. So the first one would be on, we're planning it for July 21. We're calling it the Eco Share, Eco Care, Eco Share Garden Party Mixer. That's really long. What that is, where we're going to have it is actually at the lawn. It's going to be a garden party. We're going to have food, drinks, tables. And the added value is that we're going to have local experts who have done composting, who have backyard growers, who have net zero homes, to come and talk to residents who like to know more about this kind of items. And what this does is that instead of having like a workshop where just one person talks and talks and talks, it's everyone in the community just coming together, exchanging ideas, coming up with ways that they could synergize and work together to, you know, have a more sustainable life. And the good thing about this is that it kind of shifts the burden of coming up with ideas, coming up with projects from administration, and empowers our community to take action on their own. So that's where this whole idea came from. And like I said, we're, I guess, we're not like a big municipality. We're not a big community. We don't have capacity to do events all the time. So empowering our residents helps, helps us to, you know, do actual events, but not have administration do all the work, right? And with this first, I guess, the first party or first event, this Eco Share, Eco Care Party Mixer, the idea is just that to get people together, like-minded people together, to just talk and then get your feedback on what kind of projects they would like to do, right? And also to share a bit of the next steps. What is this project all about? How we're going to actually fund them? Okay, so that's the first one, the Eco Part, the Garden Party Mixer. The second one is that we will have to have some sort of orientation training, where we will go through step by step the process of how they could actually run projects in the community with the grant that is provided. Okay, so that's the two different things there. So the main one is, can we go ahead with the activities? Okay, I was able to be a bit more, oh, wrong one. I tried to move my laptop, and it's not supposed to be laptop that moves. Okay, the second one is this part here, this Sustainability Incentive Program. We have that $15,000 grant already from Eclay, Canada. $10,000 of it could go to fund these projects. And it doesn't have to be like huge amounts. It could just be $50 for you to do a project. And it could go from 50, we put a cap at $2,000 for each project. The funding is 50 to 2,000. That will be administered by the town itself. The idea is that, you know, you find your folks, you find like-minded people to motivate each other to create change in the community. That's why this program, the whole program is called Agents of Change. We, for us, we call it our Eco Share, Eco Share Program. Right, the eligibility criteria that we have kind of, you know, not decided, but this is what we propose right now. I don't want it to just be for one business or one person. It should be a group of residents. So we make it part of the criteria that you have to find at least two other people to come with you and do this project together. And that is why there's that open for nonprofits, a group of at least three businesses or three residents. So anyone can come in, but they have to be Drayton Valley residents or Drayton Valley businesses, and they have to do the project that benefits Drayton Valley. So, you know, don't come here and do projects like outside of Drayton Valley. We cannot fund that. And this is the timeline that is kind of worrying for me, because we need to spend that $15,000 before the 1st of February of 2023. So that's a really short timeline. Now, I guess you're wondering what kind of projects that, you know, committees could do and have done before. So what I would like to focus on is more on waste reduction, climate literacy, energy efficiency. So these are the projects that I did pull. Oh, I can read from here. Waste reduction. You can, you know, if people want to do tool sharing library, we could help fund some of the tools. If they want to do repair cafes, we could help share their hosting costs for that. If they want to do bicycle care workshops, that could be something that is done before the DV100. So it could be a nice sign there. That could also be something we could help co-share. For waste reduction in the garden, there are programs like Backyard Food Garden, meetups where people can go look at each other's gardens and share tips and tricks. Supperlicious Events is usually done in fall, where they take the fall harvest and then make soup and share it with the community. Vegan Cooking Workshops, Urban Composting. I was actually invited to see someone who did urban composting. It actually looked not too difficult. And then maybe canning and preserving lessons. Then, you know, we could have experts come in and we could pay the honorarium for the experts. But this would be run by the volunteers. We could just help them with the funding part. For energy efficiency, something that could be done is like group energy audits. Energy audits can be quite expensive and quite difficult, because there's just so many people wanting to do energy audits right now. So if you have a group of people come together and do it together, expert, energy advisors might be able to come in and do three or four houses at the same time. And we could help maybe pay for the travel expenses for the experts. So there's a lot of ways that we could help motivate people to actually do this kind of projects. There's energy poverty workshops, electric vehicle test drive. So these are just sample projects. Depending on what the interest is, maybe there are other projects that people could explore. Right, this is also quite new, oh, sorry. This is also another new thing. We, I came up with this kind of process on how the actual program would work. Like I said, it could be a very small value of $50. So if it's $50, I wouldn't want the process to be so difficult that there's a lot of rate tip that we have to bring it to so many different people for approval. So if it's just $200, I think we could just follow this. Okay, once we received the grant application, I could review for completeness and eligibility, and we can just forward it to COs for approval. If it's $50, I don't think it should be so difficult to do. Then if it's more than $200, then it could easily go to the Sustainability Committee, and they could forward it to council for approval. Then it can go to regular council meeting like this, right? And we could have a list of projects to be approved at the same time, or disapproved at the same time. Then applicants is informed the decision, we sign funding agreements, participants implement a project, they submit the funding report, and we reimburse based on receipts. That's part of the requirement for this program. The projects must be based on receipts. So we cannot just give them $100, go have fun. We need to have receipts before we can reimburse them. And, yep, so this is the last part here. The participants are reimbursed based on what they were approved, and it has to be eligible expenses. And, yep, this is the basic process of it. So if council thinks this is a good process, we could start developing the tools, application forms, orientation guides, all those things. But this is not final yet. We could still bring it to the next meeting to finalize the process. The only thing that needs to be seen today is, can I have a garden party in July 21st? That's it, yeah, by this one.
Perfect, that's it?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. Thank you, Aisha. That was a very good information. I like the flow chart. It's easier to understand. I believe this was discussed on Sustainability Committee, and it's coming here now, or?
No, it wasn't approved yet by the, when we had the last meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought if there was any recommendations from Sustainability Committee. But, so just to understand the budgetary component of things, so $15,000, and that's in kind or that's actual dollars that we're gonna put there?
For us?
For the?
$15,000? It's cash from Eclay, yeah.
Okay, and then from the town side of things, what?
It's in-kind contribution.
Okay, and is there dollar value to that, or?
Yes, I'm keeping track of what the staff time is, what, you know, if we print stuff, then I take into account that if we take tables, then we're gonna put that into that cost as well. So it's quite a process, keeping track of all that things.
Okay, thank you. No, other than that, looks great. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor McGee?
Good morning, Aisha.
Morning.
It seems fairly simple and straightforward to try to get people now to get to the table for a garden party, to get groups of three. And what my guess is, it won't be very difficult to spend that $15,000 in the in-kind support. So I certainly don't have any issues with this initiative. I think it also adds to the other things that we continue to do. And as you stated, it's, we're a small town. And interestingly enough, the town of Drayton Valley is the only Alberta municipality out of the 11 selected across Canada to participate in the AOC project.
I forgot to brag about that. We, they had, I think, about 20 to 30 applications. We were the only Alberta municipality that got this in. And the best part was, I kind of just did the grant application the day before it closed.
Wow.
Yeah, we were really expecting to get this, and then like, oh, we got it. Now we're like, stop doing it. But it's kind of, it's also really exciting, just, you know, being able to be in a committee, talk to people with all these different ideas. So it's, it's been fun so far. I also love work.
Yeah, that's wonderful. So just a question, when I'm looking at the proposed program process, I'm just wondering, it does seem like there's quite a bit of steps in there. I'm just wondering if it needs to come to council for final approval once the funds are there, like, or is that just for the in-kind portion? Or what is the portion of that, if the money's already there and?
The money's already there.
Yeah, the money's already there. So I'm just kind of wondering what it would need to come to council for approval for.
Yeah, if I could, so the, the application into this process, participation in the program was already approved by council. So the understanding of what we're looking for here today, essentially permission to go ahead with the plan as outlined. So I think if council is comfortable with the basics of this process, the details of the implementation of it are probably a little deeper than council needs to look at. But if in concept, how this is being implemented makes sense to council, and there's no concerns, then just a motion to proceed today will be sufficient.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. And then too, you had mentioned you're, we're unsure if you'd be able to spend the money by February and things like that. I think it's good that it'll be forwarded to the Sustainability Committee, because I was even thinking like lanterns on the pond and how EPBR was interested in that. So perhaps they could, you know, apply for something or another group or organization, and they could be coming that same night and talking about, I don't know, the ecosystems or talking about something in regards. So maybe just however we advertise it, we could have more people come for that night and then help with the funding of that. Something like that, just some ideas. But I think that there'll be lots of ideas coming around the table there. So yeah, that's fantastic. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor McGee, another, or Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I guess just my thought around the 200 bucks, is that low to be coming back to council? I think maybe we could up that a bit, but, you know, do you go 500? Just throwing that out there, because I don't know that we should be spending a whole ton of time on anything over.
Yeah, that's my, was my concern too, is when you're looking at that. And I mean, $15,000 in $200 increments could be a lot of.
Yeah, so there, there is an ability for council to say either, like, the project's been approved. So council could say, we don't want to approve the individual projects within the program. That can either be done at the CAO level, or it could be delegated to the committee. My thought is that with, if we were looking at $250 projects over $15,000, that's a lot of projects to be coming to council. So certainly that's something that council could, could ask administration to change in the plan, is how that piece is handled.
Yeah, I think like you said, if the, if the $15,000 has already been approved, I don't think that it needs to be forwarded to council for final approval, right? Counselor Kamana?
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, yes, individual projects doesn't need to come, and it shouldn't come. But as, when you plan, would you be able to just go through a list of projects and, you know, as one go, maybe it'll come to council and say, you know, this is what we're gonna do with the funds? Is that a possibility to do? You know, I agree with Colin's comment, 200 is low. Maybe we can go even up to 500. But it would be nice to see these are the projects that, that we're gonna carry out with that. And in one go, we can approve all of that.
Yeah, it would be my expectation that if I was approving projects within the program, regardless of the amount, then there would be a report back to council to explain what's been approved, so that it's not a blind spot for council. You get to see what the program is doing in the community. Absolutely.
Okay, is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Deputy Mayor McGee?
I'd make a motion, Madam Mayor, that council directs administration to proceed with the project as presented, considering the allotment and CAO and committee making those decisions. I think that's the right way to go, with a report back to council.
Did you get that, Bree?
If I could just seek a point of clarity. So would the intention of the motion be that the CAO is approving the projects? Or that there would be some threshold at which the committee would approve them instead of the CAO?
I would park it back in the CAO's position to make all of those decisions. Money's there just to report, just so we're also aware of what's happening in our community. It's good, it's just a good thing to be.
Okay. So if I could, I might suggest that it be presented with an amendment that project approval be done by the CAO. Probably simple enough for.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, did you get that, Bree? Perfect, okay, wonderful. Is there any comment, question, or debate on the motion? None? Okay, then I will ask, or do you have something, Camila?
No, just, again, so the, the project will be approved by the CAO. And before actually it happens out there, we would know about it. Just don't want to see that, you know, that's happening there, and then it's not something that council wishes to go ahead, like the incident that we had last time, right? So just to get that information, so we know, we can give our feedback.
Could you clarify a little bit better? That was, yeah.
So I, I think my, my, the proposal for me would be that if I was approving the projects, I would report them at the next council meeting. What, I, I don't know that, in that case, I don't know if the CAO would be approving them. If they need to come back to council, that, that can be done too.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think here, because I'm thinking at, you know, that every council that's appointed on all the committees when decisions are made at the committee level, they're not coming for approval from council, right? So that's why I'm thinking that this would be a bit hard to just say that Sustainability needs to report to council before they're able to go ahead with something, right? Like the funds are already there for the $15,000, so these would kind of be one-off projects. So I'm just thinking if, no matter what committee you were on, if that wouldn't come to council, right? So how would this kind of be any different unless you can think of a different way? Counselor Kamana?
No, the, the way that committee is set up now is, everything comes to council pretty much, right? And we haven't taken any addition in the committee level at all. Yeah, before it was set up like that, but not anymore.
Yeah, so if, if the process was that projects were submitted to the committee, the committee would make a recommendation to council, and then council would have to hear them. If, ultimately, if council wants to approve the projects, it might be a faster process to not bring them to the committee, but have them come direct to council. But if my understanding is correct, that the purpose of allowing the CAO to approve the projects is for expediency and getting projects underway. If the situation was that I could approve them, but needed to bring them to council for super-approval, then essentially I couldn't release my decision until after council had said, yep, that's okay, which I think is the same as bringing them to council. So if that was the intent, it may in fact be better just to have council approve the projects.
But this is just my concern, you know, if everybody else is fine with that, then that's fine with me as well.
Okay, the, maybe then what, there's a motion on the table, then I'll ask for everybody all in favor for that motion? So could you repeat the motion back, Bree? So the motion is that council direct administration to proceed with the project as presented, with project approval to be done by the CAO. Okay, and I will ask all in favor? All opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to a 5.2, Aventures Project Access to Site Form from NRCAN Zero Emission Vehicle Infrastructure Project Application.
So, sorry, B, it's the same file? Okay, so this is the Electric Vehicle Charging Network project that we have with seven other municipalities in the region. We already had an initial network design for the past couple of years, where we know that we need, we want to have 22 host communities to have electric vehicle chargers so that they could fill up that gap in this region. Just bring it here. Like, we have charges here, but the blue ones are the ones that are proposed. So if you have an electric car and you want to go from Edmonton to Grand Prairie, you're not gonna make it at this time. So that's why we want to have all these new chargers coming in there. But as I've presented a few times before, electric vehicle chargers are very expensive. One of them could cost more than $100,000 if you want the really fast chargers, which is why we're trying to work with other municipalities to bring the cost down through group purchasing power. And we also found out that finally there's an NRCAN ZEBIT program that could fund up to 50% of the installation cost. What this project is about is that instead of the town actually owning the very expensive, high voltage equipment, we will have a third party who will be owner, and they will come and install those equipment on our land, basically. They would enter into a no-cost land use agreement with us, and they will install, operate, and maintain the equipment for at least 10 years. So that's the model that we're going for, and this has been already done in Accelerate Cutinis and Peak to Prairie's project. So this is not something super new. The new part is that we are finally able to get, hopefully able to get funding. So the next steps would be, we kind of have to do this technical review of the site, and we need to also submit to NRCAN that we are the owners of the site. So the site that I'm actually, I keep forgetting this, okay. The site that I'm actually talking about is the parking lot across from downtown, which is basically across from where we are right now. Either that one or the small parking lot next to EPEC, Eleanor Park, Eleanor Pickup Art Center. When we came up with these different sites, the project manager implemented for Aventures came up with these criteria of what we want the site to look like. Like, you know, we want it to be government-owned land so that that would entice these third parties, companies to come in and actually build there. We want to have this opportunity for cultural branding. It should be accessible from all directions and highly visible. It should contribute to the overall network. There's an available power source. I know that there's a couple of transformers there. It could be dedicated parking, and it's walking distance to local attractions. And as everyone knows, that spot is really good, because it's close to all our businesses. It's close to a park. So let's say you are an electric vehicle driver. You could actually park there and have your kids run around in the park, go to the library, go to the washroom there, go have donuts at the bakery. There's shops you can go to, spend a couple of hours, and your car would be fully charged. So I feel that that's a good spot for us to actually have this. And we won't be taking the whole lot. It would just be a couple of parking spots. So what's required for this is that council approves, let's see, that we submit this site access verification form on page 15. There is no mandatory contribution for this project anymore. This is just to say that we own this land, we own this site, and we are able to allow a third party to come in and install the equipment there. So that is the request for today. If we could go ahead and submit this form to our project facilitator, program facilitator, so that we could put in the sites as where we want to put our EVs for this project.
So what I thought I read, it was, there's, there's a 50% cost to $100,000 chargers. And so NRCAN would supply that. But, but having heard what you said, Aisha, is you're now saying that NRCAN will fund the entire, as long as we go into a cost agreement?
I wish, no, they will pay 50%. Then the third-party company that we will be signing the agreement with, it could be someone like Echo or Fortis or Tesla, for all I know. Any third-party company could answer to the RFD for this. They will be paying the other 50%. So we do not want to pay a single cent for this, if possible.
So at this point in time, we, we just supply some land?
We just supply land. And at this point in time, we're just saying we could. And at this point in time, we're just saying we could supply the land. We're not even supplying it yet.
Thank you. So, Aisha, at this point, we are trying to, I guess, put the pieces together, right? And it will come back to the council when all the pieces are in place for a final decision. Okay, we have a couple of charging places in town. Would you know how well they are utilized as of now?
Not super well utilized, but those are long, it takes about eight hours to charge.
Right.
So this will only be like forty minutes to two hours. So it's very fast.
Thank you.
They're already out. They just came out last week. Yep, yes, because ownership is very expensive as well because the electricity could go up to like two thousand a month. So it, no, yeah, a month or year, a month, yes. We don't want to pay that again. We don't want to have that cost of ownership. So that's why we want this third party to come in and handle all that part of it.
Thank you. Another question is, we do have a charger going into the new aquatic center. Is that a level two or a level three?
That's a level two. That's the eight-hour one.
That's a level two. And did we apply for any grants for that or any sort of funding?
They they already, they were already oversubscribed by the time we put our application in, so we're on their waiting list.
Oh, okay. So there's the potential that that could be?
That very slim potential.
A very slim potential. I was just wondering if that grant couldn't have been applied to this location or it mattered, but then you talked about it being central.
Yeah, yeah, because the aquatic center doesn't really match those, this kind of criteria as well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Rothman?
So I I just wanted to make sure that in terms of the project, that the picture was clear for council. So it's the group's intention, they're looking for a way to have these installed at zero cost to the municipality, zero capital cost, zero operating cost. The attention is that if that's not able to be found, there'd be, have to be a decision point by the individual partners about whether or not the individual municipalities would shoulder it or abandon the project. So the the effort that we're putting into this project, the investment that we're making right now is all contingent on whether we can find a model that that leaves us with no capital operating cost.
So when you pull up the map and you show that all the other municipalities that are wanting to collaborate on this project, where are they at right now? So are they in the process of they've picked a site and working with a third party as well? Oh, I think your mic is off too. Everybody's, everybody's mic's rough.
Where was it? Okay, everyone's at the same stage where they've already decided where they want to put it and we're taking it to council, different councils to get it approved to go on, to to submit to N R C A N. Everyone, actually, we just we just liaise with our project facilitator, which is Community Energy Association. They actually did the Peak Two Prairies and Accelerate Cutinis project, so they're very experienced in this. And they are working with, they are actually the ones releasing the R F Q. And, you know, they will be the one working with the third-party, they will, third-party business and they will be the ones arranging for the technical site visits. All those things will be them doing. We're just, here you go.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor McGee?
So if the the slow chargers are all, are where, are the eight-hour ones, we can see all the blue dots and then the gray ones are the fast chargers, that that's what that tells me too, right?
Oh, no, all of them are fast chargers. The gray ones are the ones that are already existing. The blue ones are the ones we want to build. There's, we don't have the second-level chargers here.
Okay, so there's no marks for second levels here?
There's no mark.
The eight hours. So I'm just thinking about the decision to go with the the slow chargers were made. And in general, my guess is, is they're not that practical. And so my my question might be, who's paying for the electricity at at the systems that we currently have now? Who pays for that?
The ones we have now. Ramada pays for Ramada and then I guess Evergreen pays for Evergreen Ford pays for their charger. The, okay, the actual price for when they charge, what we charge them, the fee is not that expensive. And if it is level two, it's not as expensive as level three charger, a DC fast charger. So it's barely, I don't, I don't, four, five dollars per charge or something? Yeah, so it's not as expensive as if we want to put in this fast chargers.
Right. Okay.
A little different than a price of a tank of gas, right?
Yeah. Two hundred dollars.
Councillor Kamana?
No, I'm just.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, please, yeah.
Go ahead, sure.
Just a quick question before I make the motion. So current fast chargers like the the one at Ramada, which is level two, like you mentioned, right? So is there a possibility to upgrade them to a level three and have we looked into cost on that?
I don't know if they would be interested
Okay.
in doing that, yeah, because they want people to actually stay at their hotel.
Right. Okay, thank you. I would like to make a motion that council directs administration to complete and submit the site access verification form to the Aventures project manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any comments, question or debate on the motion? None? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Moving on to five point three, nomination for Alberta municipalities, municipal environmental award.
Sorry, it's me again.
That's okay.
Well, this is pretty straightforward. We went to, well, we went to brag about our food cyclist project.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I think this is a good one for us to submit to. We don't get any cash incentives or whatever, so it's just a bragging rights for this. Yep, and yeah, if council is ready to approve, then I will finalize the form and we can submit it before tomorrow's deadline. I do hope if anyone has like videos or photos of them using their food cyclists, if you could share them with me, because one of the requirements is that they need four high-resolution photos. I maybe have two, so if council has them. I will also ask the other food cyclist participants for photos, but you know, the more the merrier.
I'll go home and take a photocall and you'll have to, because you use yours a lot. I know you could get a photo of you and your family too.
If you could do a video as well, I remember someone said they wanted to do video.
Maybe for, we just have a few people online. Maybe, could you just maybe speak a little bit about what the award is for or how goes the award? Or who it's through, maybe perhaps?
Okay, the Alberta municipalities is, I guess, the organizations that are, let's see, how do I talk about Alberta? They're organization that brings services to municipalities and they have this award every year. They have things like a leadership award, elected official awards, and the one that we are targeting is the municipal environmental award. And they have different categories depending on the number of populations. So we would come and they're regular member of Alberta municipalities with a population of two thousand five hundred to ten thousand dollars. And we need to demonstrate that we have projects or initiative, one project or initiative that has a good environmental impact, fostering behavioral changes, is original, innovative, there's some community stakeholder involvement, is easily scalable and there are social and economic benefits. So this basically requires a lot of writing. And I think the food cyclist project would be a good fit for this just because it does hit all of those checklist points. The other one we have in the escape room, but we don't have tangible numbers for that. Whereas with the food cyclist, we know, you know, sort of how many, how much emissions, how many food cyclists went out, how many times people use them, so we will have those numbers to be provided to this, for this award. Yes, I think, yep. And they will be announcing the winner at the actual Alberta municipalities convention, I think it will be in September.
September, yeah. Oh, wonderful. Are there any questions for administration? No, we're good. Okay, yeah, I think this is exciting. Like you said, I think it gives us bragging rights. We're very proud of our, the Food Cycler Pilot Program. I think that, like you said, it shows innovation and advanced technology and waste management. It's been very exciting. I know I've been using mine like crazy and I'm hearing lots of feedback from the community as well, people that are excited to have it and it's great. Hopefully we can redo this pilot again. Yeah, so it's just fantastic. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Councillor Sheriffs?
I would like to make a motion that council directs administration to submit a nomination for the Alberta municipalities municipal environment award.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any comments, question or debate on the motion? None being, I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to when we're at A U M A to receiving this award. We're gonna be positive about it. Moving on to five point four, twenty twenty-two Town Beautification Budget Update. Mr. Olonick?
Good morning.
Good morning, council. Council has requested that administration provide an outline of what town beautification can be achieved within the twenty twenty-two approved budget from the two thousand, or June eighth Town Beautification Proposal Presentation. Administration is now planned what can be effectively undertaken in the twenty twenty-two year and will bring forward the rest of the additional plans for council's consideration as part of the twenty twenty-three budget moving forward. If approved, administration will proceed with implementing the following. Two solar storm pond eration fountains, one for the Omniplex Pond and one for Sunrise Pond. Ten metal banners erected on some of the town's blue street poles on Fiftieth Street near the downtown core. Four solar, or four solar trail lights to be implemented at Sunrise Pond. And about twenty-five thousand dollars of solar and wire decorative lighting to be installed at Discovery Park, Civic Center and the downtown park on the trees and metal uprights. And the bigger concepts will be proposed in twenty twenty-three budget due to availability and pricing. So this, does council have funding? Oh, sorry, yeah. So the cost of implementing the before-mentioned projects are estimated at a value of a hundred thousand that will be covered under the Festive Lights operating budget and using the remainder of the C P four twenty-five, which is the town revitalization capital budget, which has been carried over the last year. So that we do have the funds available. It wouldn't be a request from reserves or anything like that. It would just be basically utilizing it.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Deputy Mayor McGee?
Timing, if we if we go ahead, will we see that in generally in a month or so?
So some of this stuff will be two weeks' delivery, so the the lights, the metal banners should be about eight weeks, as long as I can hammer down a proper design. So I would say that all of it should be, we should be able to get all of it this year installed before snow. So, because a lot of the stuff's ready to go.
Councillor Sheriff? So you said you're coming up with the design for the metal banner banners right now? Do you have any samples?
Not yet. I'm just, I I'm sitting down with some of the staff and some service providers and we're coming up with some ideas. Essentially, the concept is, and I can definitely bring this back to council to, for your guys' approval, but what administration is is thinking is essentially not making the metal banners just about oil and gas. I mean, we have a large agricultural community. We have a big forestry community, so it's to try to find a design that kind of encompasses everything instead of having a direct focal point. And then also having a, like a clasp or a hook on the bottom so that if a company would wish to sponsor these metal banners, that we can just kind of maybe click in some sort of an advertisement thing for the companies, just so that they get a bit of recognition if they would like to help out with this. And then if they don't want to do it anymore, or if the metrics change, you know, we can take them off, swap them out if it needs updating. So that's where administration is at currently with it. I'm just getting the design worked on.
Perfect. Councillor Kamana?
Thank you. So this is already budgeted, as I can see, right? It's on the, okay. And so if there's other things that, you know, of course, this is great that we are trying to make our town beautiful. That's excellent. But there are other things that's out of the scope, like we have that beautiful new signs out there from Boston Pizza and when you drive in, unless you actually try to see them, you can't see them, right? You know, is there a possibility to move it somewhere, you know, prominent than there and stuff like that where I think we need to look into a little bit further. So would those things come later as decision items?
Yeah, to Councillor Kamana through the chair. So, yeah, we can definitely, administration can look at that, but also with the my initial beautification proposal, like the gateway idea, the community gardens, that would be stuff that administration would like to take on in the next, you know, year or so, but that would be contingent on council's approval for budgeting. I know I have Jen Garrick, who's part of the the light in the downtown park, planning of it. She's got quite a concept for, you know, some some tree lighting, some archways from some of the material that council provided me. It'll be a substantial cost. It'll look really nice, but that's kind of the stuff that administration, we bring into council this fall for their consideration, so.
Sounds good. And and the metal banners, they will be there for the for the year? We are not taking down?
No, that's right. And that would kind of be a multi-year approach, just kind of with the price of steel and that sort of thing. It's it's not, we can, if council would like to achieve it all in one year, we can propose it all for the twenty twenty-three year, but I just figure it's kind of over a period of time just due to the cost of it.
Thank you.
And some of those items, like we we talked about going into the winter months and Christmas and things like that, those will be things that you'll be bringing back in the fall to be done this year, perhaps, right?
Yes, upon your approval, yes.
Okay, and then just another question as, because we've had some companies come forward and say that they'd like to help with beautification and things like that. So if, how are we going to be reaching out to them? How are we going to, I know some said to send the plan that we're going to do this year and then all the extras, so then they could perhaps pick. Would we be able to get extras done because of that? Or how is that going to kind of work, that partnership?
So Owen and I have kind of talked this over, so if if council approves these proceeding on these projects today, we'll then reach out to our community partners that have expressed that interest and see what their capacity to assist might be. The assistance that they provide would then reduce the cost and leave us with some additional funds leftovers. And so when it comes to budget time, we'll be able to reallocate those to to other cost priorities. So it's certainly our intention to reach out. We just haven't done that because we felt it was important that council say yes, advance on these projects before we reached out to the companies.
Perfect. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor McGee?
Question and a motion. The question is locally, the metal signs, we can do local, right?
That's correct, yeah. I would, I want to try to use local businesses as much as I can for for all of this work, minus the stuff that, like some of the lighting, we would have to import.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that council approves the implementation of town beautification works identified for the remainder of twenty twenty-two with funding from operations and unused funds from the capital project C P four two five.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions, comment or debate on the motion? Nope, we're good. Okay, thank you very much. There is a motion on the table that council approved the implementation of town beautification works identified for the remainder of twenty twenty-two with funding from operations and unused funds from the capital project C P four two five. And I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. We are very excited to see these projects happening.
There'll be more coming, Madam Mayor, but.
Wonderful. We're looking forward to it. Moving on to five point five, request for contracted services funding.
Thank you. Administration is requesting that council approve funding in the amount of forty thousand dollars to allow parks to hire contractors to supplement the work of the town employees, increasing the park service standard for the remainder of the summer. Administration is concerned about a misalignment between the budgeted park service levels and council slash community expectations. During budget deliberations in twenty seventeen, the parks budget and associated service level were reduced by council. These service levels have widely persisted, however, based on council and public feedback. Administration would like to use contracted services to increase service level for the remainder of the season. This fall during budget deliberations, administration will lead council through establishing service levels that reflect the current council's expectations. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions for administration? I'm gonna go with Councillor Evans.
Thank you. So what kind of contractors you're gonna hire?
So what kind of contractors you're gonna hire? Are you looking at people to cut grass, trim trees, that kind of stuff?
That's correct, Counselor Evans through the chair. So essentially, it would be mowing. It would be helping with, you know, doing like some of the shrub beds, remulching the, the tree beds. Yeah, arboring, doing a bit more arboring to kind of speed it up. We do have our arborist. However, it's, it's quite a workload. So this will just kind of help speed things up while basically not letting other areas kind of slip through the cracks and, and fall a bit.
Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. Along that line, when you mentioned about contractors, are we looking at hiring more local students to do some work that they can do? You know, arborist, you know, going up there, probably not, but most of other work. I'm not sure how many students we have for now, but maybe we need to increase that. I'm just, just at.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Kamana. So administration feels it, it might be a little bit tricky to find some seasonal students at this time because they kind of, they're pretty much all found work and locked up for the most part. So it would be local contractors that already provide these professional services, but in the fall, well, like most of, well, we will definitely be coming to council to increase our seasonal staff from 17 that we currently sit to initially 25 of where we've sat for a very long time in this community. So, yeah, it's, we'll get there.
Deputy Mayor McGee?
So would, would it look like a contractor could take on, say, the CETC, just that? Somebody might take the, the, the south sign? Somebody might take Discovery Park and that's what they look after? They could run a little competition? Who's better than that?
That's right.
All right, I like it. Thank you.
So looking at the report, when it speaks to that the service levels were reduced back in 2017 and they've slowly increased over the, the last few years. How many summer students did we have last year?
We had one less. We had 16.
We had 16?
Yeah.
And could you speak to, just kind of hearing in the community that, you know, I guess the complaints coming in that the service level for lawn cutting is, is is not where it was last year. So I'm just kind of wondering, you know, if we had 16 students last year and we're having 17 this year, what that would be, that we're seeing that there was, there was a difference in the community?
Okay. Oh, go ahead. So I, I think what the biggest part of the difference comes from is when you have a change in council, the, the new council has a series of expectations about the community. And so it's, it's mowing, it's parks, it's garbage cans, it's trees, it's all of those things. And so when the service level changed, it has been being adjusted slowly, but I think the current council's expectation and certainly the feedback we get from the community, because we, we get a lot of feedback from the community as some of it comes through council. So I'm sure you're aware that, you know, there's some frustration that, you know, the parks don't look the way they used to, the, you know, the grass isn't mowed as often, and, and to get all of those things done, to maintain that service level, that's the current expectation. We need more resources. And so I think, you know, Owen's been doing what he can over the last few years to kind of inch back to the service level where we were before, but I think the change in council and community expectation has really highlighted this as an area where the, the expectations are not being delivered by our current budget plan. So that's our intention here, is if we can create some space using contractors to the end of the year, then we'll have a good conversation with council throughout the budget process to see what's the service level that council wants to see in the budget.
Has the rotation of the lawn mowing changed from last year to this year?
No, Madam Mayor, essentially, it's the weather. Last year, it was a heck of a lot drier than it is right now. So it still is a nine-day rotation and parks is doing what they can. Like I said, at this time of the year, you know, well, now the dandelions are over, so it looks a lot better. But now, I mean, when you get the rain and you get the sun, you can practically hear the grass grow. So they're doing what they can.
Yeah.
And, and just to kind of point out, going into the fall, administration will make it look a lot like the snow removal policy. We'll design a, a series of scenarios. What it would look like at, at this number, this budget number, what it would look like, and then council can essentially choose what, what they would like to do. Because prior to our fatality in parks, those number of years ago, we were at 25 seasonals. And then the year it happened, we were down to eight because due to budget restrictions. And I have been slowly trying to clamor back to get to original staffing levels, but I just feel now with, with kind of the, the temperature that we're at with council and community expectations, maybe I just present kind of a, a leap to get us back to where we're at. Or where we were, sorry.
Yeah, and I do think that it, it is important, you know, just hearing from this council that beautification enforcement and, and that service level is, is definitely a lot higher. I know that the decision was made before any of us were on. It was a council that none of us were on. So we're slowly over the years trying to increase it. The economy is, you know, doing a little bit better now and there's an opportunity for some contractors to come in. When are you anticipating, if approved today, then they could be starting? Have you had those discussions already?
Yeah, I already talked with the Parks Lead Hand and the Public Works Manager. We already have contractor price sheets. We're, we're ready to go.
Gear it up and ready to go. So upon approval, we're, we're gonna see the town cut like crazy? Wonderful. Okay. Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Counselor Evans? Oh, sure. Counselor Clark has a question.
So the funding for this is gonna come from reserves then?
From operations.
Counselor Evans, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you. Make the motion that council approves the request for funding of parks contracted services in the amount of $40,000.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, questions or debate? Deputy Mayor McGee?
So one, one thing I would raise is a week ago, we, my rightabouts were, I thought, oh my God, but yesterday, outstanding. Almost every park was, was covered. We had a, Counselor Clark mentioned a Boulevard done, right? And, and so, and I noticed the Esso Boulevard is done. I think there was that sort of communication gap with who owns what or how we're doing it. And so I think we've come a long ways in one week. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Deputy Mayor McGee. And I did also notice, just off topic a little bit, that the potholes on 50th were being filled yesterday. So that was very exciting that I didn't have to bring that up again today. So I appreciate that. There is a motion on the table that council approved the request for funding of, oh, Counselor Kamana, do you have a question?
Sorry, no, yeah, I just wondered about, you know, would maintain the cemetery included on this? So it will be a separate addition item?
So the, the cemetery is part of the parks rotation? So it's on the same nine-day schedule as, as all of our other mowing? And then our work there. So yes, it would be one of the things we would have additional capacity to do more in.
Perfect, thank you.
And there probably want to be a more elaborate conversation on that. We'll have that later on, on the agenda. Perfect. Thank you very much. So there is a motion on the table that council approved the request for funding of parks contracted services in the amount of $40,000. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Allinick. Moving on to... Yeah, I think what we'll do is maybe we'll take a 10-minute break at 10:05 AM. AM. And we are jumping back on the agenda to 5.6, the Community Standards Bylaw 2022-06P. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So as you all may remember, administration is looking at introducing a new community standards bylaw into the community. Part of that is, this kind of all came about when we did a review of our current community standards bylaw, and there were some inefficiencies that were located and some difficulties when it comes to enforcement to be able to get properties in compliance and stuff like that. So when we completed this review, we ended up consolidating six bylaws into the new proposed community standards bylaw. So it was community standards bylaw, the false alarms bylaw, the firearms control bylaw, the noise bylaw, parks and public facilities bylaw, and the temporary shelter bylaw. It's our intention that by consolidating all of these bylaws into one, it's going to make it easier for public as well as administration to both read and understand, as well easier for enforcement services to actually do enforcement when it is relating to these bylaws. So a little bit of background, on May 25th of this year, we came to council with the first reading of the community standards bylaw. It was passed on that date. We then came to council on June 8th and we presented our plan for engagement of what we were going to do to solicit feedback from the community and council and stuff like that. On June 15th, we held a open house event at the Mackenzie Center between 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM. At that event, we had a total of 21 people that attended. Part of our engagement was, a big part of it was on social media. Between our social media accounts, we ended up putting out 23 different posts pertaining to the community standards bylaw, either at the open house or just soliciting feedback for that. Of the 23 posts that we made, we were able to reach 6,283 people. That were able to kind of at least know a little bit of what we were doing, whether they started clicking and reading is a different story, but at least we were able to reach over 6,200 people. So then on June 22nd, administration was also able to have a planning session with council where we were able to outline some additional administrative changes, which are before council today in the agenda package, and answer some questions that council had. So after soliciting some additional feedback, we do have a couple minor changes that we are kind of proposing as well, that was handed out to everyone during the break. It's the two pager there. So the first part does fall under property maintenance, particularly when we get into grass. When we were reviewing the current wording in the areas that we were kind of trying not to apply to, we found a couple small pockets in town that were essentially vacant areas, but they were classified as an area that we would want to be cut, but if we were to pass this bylaw in its, in its current state, we would then now be allowing them not to have to cut their grass. So we worked with planning and development and we have a slight amendment on people that are, or properties that are zoned under the land use bylaw as the urban reserve district that are being used for agricultural purposes are not required to take care of their vegetation to the six-inch standard. And then the second part that we're bringing today that is different from the agenda package is under part five, which is the overnight shelters. Just a little bit confusing. Well, it was a mistake on my part, actually. The section 30 was supposed to have a part at the end on no person owner or occupant shall use or permit the use of a recreational vehicle for human habitation or as a residence for a period longer than seven consecutive days within one calendar year. And then I forgot to add, unless in an area designated a campground by the municipality. That was put the, in an area designated as campground by the municipality was actually inserted in section 29 above, which talks about the use of accessory buildings, so like sheds and stuff like that. So the intent isn't that people were able to live in a shed in a campground. It's, or stay in a shed in a campground. The intent is that they're allowed to stay in a recreational vehicle in a campground for more than seven days. With that being said, the current bylaw that is on the agenda package is amended from the current, or from the first reading on March 25th. It is the same that council was able to review on June June 25th. And next steps is, we are here today to hopefully receive second and third reading. If we do receive second and third reading, then the bylaw does become legislation. At that point, we're going to be working with communications to do a communication campaign, education campaign with the community to make them further aware of new requirements and just even older requirements that we've essentially just brought over to the new one on just further reminding people of what the laws are in the community kind of thing. With that being said, any questions?
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Counselor Clark?
We did have somebody reach out yesterday from the public that read it, and they had one minor question, I guess, regarding the seven consecutive days. I won't go through it all, but their question really was, is it says, with the wording in the draft community standard bylaw, using a recreational vehicle for human habitation or a residence is only prohibited for short periods. We reference the seven days. It says, but for eight or more consecutive days, is it allowed? Is this what you intended? And I said, you know, I, I did respond and I just said, you know, it could potentially read for a period not to exceed seven consecutive days. So it kind of gets us around that, but.
Absolutely. So I believe we had an individual that attended the open house with pretty much the exact same concern. So that concern was actually part of the administrative amendments that were presented to council during the June 25th meeting. So those changes are already on the current amended bylaw that is in the agenda package today, to clarify that, so.
Oh, perfect. So it says not exceeding then?
Not longer than.
Okay, perfect. So that we've covered that? Yeah.
He does, what he says is he's, he's paraphrasing here. So this section only applies for a period not longer than seven consecutive days within one calendar year. I think it makes sense to me, but I don't know. Your lawyers.
And what number is that, Colin? 30?
30.1.
30.1, okay. Yes.
So one, one calendar year, does it, does it mean that they can be there two days and then three days and if it's more than five, they can't?
So on the amended on this sheet, it's, this section only applies for a period no longer than seven consecutive days. That is no longer in here?
Sorry, if, if I could. So I believe we're talking about section 30. And what it says is that no person shall use or permit a recreational vehicle as a habitation or residence for a period longer than seven days.
Seven consecutive days.
There's no not there. So you can use it for seven days, but not longer.
That clarifies that, Colin?
Yeah. And I do believe there was a draft at some point that had a not longer.
Yeah.
And that created the confusion, but it is addressed now. It's not for a period not longer, it's for a period longer. Which
For a period longer than.
So you're good to seven days after that. No good.
You're not. Okay. Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. No, it's, it's, like, we are, we are setting these bylaws and all that and, and trying to make our community again beautiful and presentable, right? So what I'm thinking on, on the line of where we are setting these standards for the community, how about the town, right? You know, can we, ideally, we should be able to follow the same standard or better. So I'm just wondering about where our policies and, and standards as, as the town facilities and town land, right? So would we be able to, for example, the, the grass cutting and the snow removal and all that?
So if I understand the, the question, you're absolutely correct. This bylaw establishes the minimum acceptable standard, and if you were below that, then you would expect to have a visit from enforcement. The town's practices, for example, on mowing, we have a nine-day rotation that makes sure that we never fall below this standard. So there is a lot of space above the standard, and that will be the, the service level conversation we have at budget time. But right now, our service level does keep us above this minimum standard.
Exactly. No, if, if that's the case, you know, that's excellent because we are asking the community to, to follow this standard and then if we can, then that's excellent, right? But that's kind of a conversation that we need to have at the budget time about where we are at. And if it is already, we are meeting and exceeding. That, that's great to see. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor McGee?
Is the intention to drive every back alley, or is it the intention that we would continue on a complaint base?
The intention is, in the short term, we've got a lot of properties that need a lot of work. We're going to be trying to identify which are the, the worst offenders and kind of get going on them. Once we start getting into the phase where the community now fully understands. Once we start getting into the phase where the community now fully understands the bylaw, they understand their expectations. My hope is that we are at the level with staffing that we are able to start proactively getting into these back alleys as well to start tackling those concerns as well. However, like I said, there is a lot of properties where even just staying on the front, the main street, you're going to come across a lot, so.
Counselor Evans?
Yeah, just, back to section 30 there. Sorry to bring this up again. But does this give someone the opportunity, so no person owner or occupant shall use or permit the use of recreational vehicles for human habitation or as a residence for a period longer than seven consecutive, consecutive days within one calendar year? Does that give people the opportunity to use them numerous times throughout the year as long as they don't exceed that seven day mark? I, I'm just kind of reading it over again and thinking, maybe we should clarify that it's a one time or up to seven consecutive days once. I, I mean, I understand what we're trying to say here. And it, knowing that and then reading it, it makes sense to me. But I'm wondering if it could be interpreted a little different and somebody would say, okay, yeah, I used it for six days and then I stopped using it. Now I'm going to use it for another six days. Because we talk about for a period longer than seven consecutive days within one calendar year. I'm just wondering if we're opening ourselves up to somebody saying, okay, there was nobody in there on the seventh day and then they're going to go live there again, starting another up to seven day chunk of time.
Um, there's definitely.
I, I know it's in the interpretation, but I just don't want to leave ourselves open to a different interpretation when we're trying to enforce this. And I know we don't want to beat this to death. I, I don't want to either. I think it's good other, I, I just see this as maybe being interpreted a little differently.
Fair enough.
Maybe we put, uh, no person or owner or occupant shall use or permit the use of recreational vehicle, blah, 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 or as a residence more than once or only once for a period longer than seven consecutive days within the calendar year?
Yeah. I was just talking with Cody a little bit. So one of the things that we could suggest is if council wanted to propose an amendment to the presented bylaw that instead of seven consecutive days, it was seven cumulative days throughout the year. Understanding that from an enforcement perspective, these would be triggered by complaints. So typically you'd have somebody that had far exceeded that. And then we would have to accumulate essentially seven days of evidence before we could shut it down. But it would prevent the possibility that somebody stay in a recreation vehicle on a property kind of Monday to Saturday, right? I, I think that, that might be a valuable amendment from our perspective.
So when, when the reading is being, a motion is being made, the motion would be made with an amendment to section 30 to be included in the motion?
Yeah. So when we do second reading, it would be inclusive in an amendment to section 30. And then a third reading can simply be of the amended bylaw.
As amended bylaw, okay. Any other questions? Would you like to make a, a motion then, Counselor Evans? For a second reading? You bet.
Sorry. Yeah. Cody and I are just observing that, that phrase actually appears in another section as well. So maybe we'll want to hit both.
Okay, so there could be, potentially be two sections that we need to amend?
Would we like to delay the second and third reading and let them? I'm, I'm, okay, I was implying like after lunch.
You meant, you meant move on to five point. You mean to move on to five point seven?
So I, I think maybe you just suggested the, the same thing I was going to suggest was that if, if council wanted to make an amendment in second reading that the references to seven consecutive days be changed to seven cumulative days.
Yeah.
And then we wait till later on into the agenda to do third reading. Cody can likely go away, make those so you can see the final copy of the bylaw before we move ahead.
So we'd be looking for a motion then for second reading? We'll move on to the rest of the items in the decision items and then bounce back around for third reading?
I think so.
Yeah. Okay. Counselor Evans, did you want to make a, a motion for second reading still, please?
Sorry. I think the amendment in second reading makes the best.
So you would, you, I think you would read the recommendation then as amended to section 30? Is that correct?
As amended with the phrase, seven consecutive days being amended to seven cumulative days.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion that council gives second reading to the proposed Community Standards Bylaw 2022-06-P with the amendment to section 30, changing seven consecutive days within one calendar year to seven cumulative days within one calendar year. Does that catch everything?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Bree, did you capture that? Yep, you got it. Perfect. Thank you for that. There has, there's a motion on the table for a second reading. Are there any comments, questions or debate on the motion? Then being, then I will ask all in favor. That is carried and we will come back. We'll bounce back around for a third reading for this, the Community Standards Bylaw. And right now I think we'll jump ahead to five point seven, non-residential property tax incentives bylaw for new industrial and commercial development and expansions. Mr. Osmond, this is you, I believe?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
So occasionally the town receives requests for tax incentive or tax cancellation for the purpose of incentive of new development and new business establishment in town. One of the, the, the way this is currently being handled is by one-off requests to council. It is currently permitted under the MGA for council to create tax incentives by establishing them in bylaw. So it, it would create incentives that were open to anyone in the community to, if they meet the requirements of council, to have access to a tax incentive program. Administration is asking today if council would like to provide administration with the directive to prepare a tax incentive bylaw, which would serve to provide for a multi-year tax exemption, reduction or deferral for non-residential properties to attract investment development and revitalization projects that provide job creation in our community. So job creation was one of the pillars of economic development previously established by council. And so it's our administration's understanding that that pillar is still important to council and that we could create a tax incentive program that said if, if you're a new business coming into the community and you're creating, or a newer existing business in the community and you're creating X number of jobs, then we would provide you with the following tax incentive. So administration hasn't done any work on the preparation of that bylaw. Because again, we'd, we'd be looking for the direction from council. If it's something council is interested in, we'll put the work in and aim to have that bylaw come back to our meeting at the end of July.
End of July, okay. Thank you for that. Are there any questions, Council Sheriff?
So I have a question because like you just mentioned, the recommendation is that the council direct administration to draft a non-residential property tax incentive bylaw for new. Should you add or existing in that recommendation then? Industrial and commercial development expansions? Or just leave it at new?
So the, the new there is new industrial and commercial development so that it wouldn't be an incentive program for existing development. So I was preview, in another municipality I was involved with, we created a tax incentive bylaw that was based on structure development. So if a newer existing business created a new structure, a taxable facility, then they had access to the tax incentive. So it's that the development itself is new, not the newness of the business.
So the business could be new or existing, but the development?
That, that's correct. And so from the jobs perspective, we would have a similar conversation. So it could be a new business in the community, it could be an existing one. But if they're changing their operations, expanding, that creates jobs, which was one of the pillars. Then we would say, okay, that's what we're trying to incentivize is the creation of those jobs.
Counselor Kamana, did you have, are you okay?
Well, no, I understand that, but should we word it that way? Or be a little bit more specific?
Yeah, I think maybe, I think Counsel Sheriff's might be right just to say that a new and existing businesses, maybe to include in there. And then for new and existing businesses and for new industrial and commercial development. Maybe just to include that, so there is a little bit of clarity there. Expansions and job creation, new and existing? Want to capture existing, right? Yep. I guess the expansion of a new, yeah.
I, I think the addition of clarification that it is for new and existing businesses and that we're talking about new and new development and, and job creation. I think, I think that we're, it just provides a little more detail. I think it's acceptable, yeah.
Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. It's excellent to see that, you know, the initiative to create, create this. You know, we've discussed about creating a package and all of that. So that, that's great. The, the only thing is that, you know, we have a economic development committee and we have these committees that we've created. If these initiatives are not coming through them, those committees become redundant and obsolete. So I was wondering, you know, this, this should be tasked to the committee itself to, to create the package and, and have, have that discussion with administration rather than administration creating it and then bringing it to the council directly, right? That's how I feel, you know? If, if that's not happening, then we don't need to have committees.
So the, the role of the committee is advisory in capacity. So it, it is administration who would create the bylaw, create the package. So I mean, I certainly understand that because of the expediency that we're looking for in the development of this policy, we, it originated with administration, it hasn't gone to the committee, which I recognize is not ideal, but it wouldn't, if we were doing that, we would essentially be looking for the committee to make the recommendation to council that it was good, not for the committee to develop the package. So.
Yeah, my, my, like I said, you know, we, I don't think we had this conversation at the committee level at all, right? And now it's coming to the council, which we can reverse the process, but still I feel that if we have these committees, we need to utilize them, right? If not, why, why do we have those committees?
Yeah, I kind of hear what you're saying in the aspect that, and I mean, I, I struggle a little bit because council decides anyways, if it decides at the committee level, right? So I'm trying to still kind of wrap my head around that whole thing. Counselor Evans?
Yeah, in, in, in the end, it's a bylaw which needs to be approved by council. I, I mean, if Counselor Kamana would prefer it roll through the committee and get her, get a read and then, and then get bumped up to, to council, you know, it's, it's, it's one more step, but I, I don't have issue with that necessarily. My question is this, so, so this bylaw would be available to send out to, to potential businesses or present to potential businesses? And the bylaw would actually lay out what tax breaks or incentives would be given to them? Or would it, is it just sort of to, to let them know that council has the ability to, to defer taxes, et cetera? So I guess what I'm asking is, does this take council out of the equation? And the bylaw itself says if you check all the boxes, if you meet this criteria, you will get this tax break or incentive? Or does it just say you will be considered for these, under these criteria? And then it will still go to council to approve a tax incentive or tax break?
So the, the previous incentive, tax incentive bylaws that I've been involved with have all been designed to set up a series of criteria that are open to anyone coming in that can check off the boxes to meet council's desire. The reason for that is it automates the process a little bit. So if there's somebody considering coming to the community and they can see what's available, and it, it's not an individualized negotiation. So it takes some of the political negotiation piece out of the equation to say council believes that this priority is important. And so anybody who can deliver on that priority has access to these benefits. And then it doesn't have to be an individualized decision.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm all for standardizing it. So it's a, it's, it's a level playing field for anyone trying to create a business in town here. And, and it also gives you folks a, a tool right off the hop to, if you're trying to attract that, that, that business, you can include that in a package. So yeah, I'm, I support creating the bylaw.
Thank you. So Counselor, I just wanted to ask Counsel Kamana a question. So are you thinking that, like Rick's saying, that a bylaw would be approved at the council level? So it would come here and then once the package would come back at the end of July to be presented, it would also be shown to the committee that this is a bylaw that's going, that's going to be presented to council? Like just basically for an update? And then, because it comes to us for a recommendation and approval anyway? So is it just for, I guess to receive this information for the committee? Is that kind of what you were looking for in between the meetings?
No, in my mind, I think we are doing it reverse, right? You know, the, the conversation need to happen at the committee level, in my mind. You know, and then, you know, refine it, create the package. And then it comes to the council and then, you know, we refine it here more and then approve, right? Not the other way around where we create it and then we send it to the, the committee and then committee, you know, give feedback and, and come back and, you know, all of that. So that, that's the thing, you know, not just economy development, even sustainability or any other committee, right? We need to have that conversation, what is the purpose of that committee? If, if that committee is just redundant, then let's get rid of it, right? And then have all these discussions here, refine it here and then approve. We can have all that happen and I'm, I'm fine with that. But just trying to understand what is the purpose of the committee?
And I'm just wondering if it's not a little bit separate because this is a bylaw where the committee wouldn't be creating a bylaw. They might create an incentive or come up with an idea of an incentive package, but the idea of the incentive package already came up with council previously, right? So I think it's, it's kind of already been done. So it's like an idea that's already been created. It's been something like you said, we've talked about for years of creating. So it's kind of finalizing that. So it's, it's a bit hard to go backwards now and say, okay, this is the vision. I mean, I think you can bring it there. It, it's a little bit difficult because that vision's already been created, right? You can't really pull it off the table. And now we're at the, we're at the point where now a bylaw, the second step where the bylaw needs to be created. Mr. Osmond? where now a bylaw, the second step where the bylaw needs to be created. Mr. Rosman?
Sorry, Tom?
Yeah, so I was going to say, one of the the pieces here is, I certainly respect the committee is an idea generating piece that makes recommendations to council, but administration shares that role. So occasionally, there will be times where we come up with a piece. But what what might help to help the committee understand kind of where its role is, is we could adopt a process for this, where when administration is done developing the bylaw, it could bring it to the committee for some feedback and recommend, and a recommendation to proceed, that it's ready to go to council. And that way, the the process doesn't circumvent the committee in entirety, but at least then they would get to see it and have some input on it. It would likely change the timeline of to be delivered back to council to add that step to it. But it is probably worthwhile for us to make sure that these types of things have some engagement for the committee.
And then those recommendations would have the committee's input to come back for council approval on the recommendations. Deputy Mayor McGee?
Two things on my mind. We tried to do this bylaw in the last council, and it never went anywhere. And I can't quite remember why, but so there is some difficulty, and I think it probably has everything to do with the how do you fit? So I'll use diversification as one, right? So you're diversifying the economy of Drayton Valley, that's a tech, right? So it's a diversification, probably number two, or number one. Or if I bought a trucking company, I'm a trucking company now with 30 people, and I buy another one for 30 people. I'm not really diversifying the economy. Do I, it'll, it'll have all that criteria in there of how that actually works, right? So, and I think that's why we struggled with it, and then we went back to one offs. And so, two things there. The third thing is, do we have a number of people waiting to get incentives right now?
So I think, I'll do the first piece first. So it was only very recently that the MGA changed to allow municipalities to create these tax incentive bylaws. There were ways that different municipalities experimented with how to, how to do this abstraction piece under the old legislation, but it was very, very difficult. And so the the change in legislation made this different. And the idea is that you you identify the things that council wants to see happen. So if this council's priority piece was jobs, the last council that I worked with on developing this, they were looking at taxable development. So you build it around what it is that you want to achieve, and then you, it becomes open to anybody that can help you achieve those goals. We do have at least one organization that would actively be looking for incentive under a bylaw like this. However, I suspect that what we will find is that there are other people who rapidly become interested, because some of them will have created, you know, if we set a job capacity, there are people that will have created jobs in the community, and and will want to have the conversation, but, you know, does it apply to them? And it very well might be. But I think, you know, we, there is at least one person right now that is is seeking the incentive, and there are likely some others that will become interested in the process as they start to understand what we're doing.
Council Comanet?
Thank you for Tom's comment. I think the discussion at that time, Tom, was how do we keep it open, right? So if we have this frame bylaw, and if it is very stringent, then if there's opportunities out there, how do we make it open that we can bring those opportunities here? And even now, I think we need to have that openness in the, you know, when I say a bylaw, that's a little bit concerns me more if I like to have a framework instead of a bylaw itself, where it can be discussed here as a council, and then if there's a bigger opportunity coming, then we can cater to that, right? If it is a bylaw, if it is, this is that, and then how do we change that? And again, that had to come to council and then change the bylaw. So that's one concern I have, so we need to have a discussion on. The second piece is, we have a committee which we have business people of our community sitting with the experience of years of experience there. So in my mind, we need to have the conversation there with those people who have created businesses in our community, who have brought opportunities to our community, and figure out what they would like to see as well. And that way, we can get the feedback from them, what will work, what will not work as well. So that's why I'm advocating for have that discussion with the committee itself.
Thank you for that. So the recommendation is, is today is to direct administration to draft that. So if there's no other questions, I will ask if there's a member of council that wants to make a recommendation for that. Once that that is drafted, then it would come here, then it would go to the committee, so there'd be more opportunity for discussion, right, on the recommendations, and maybe how, how and if, right? I think there'll be a larger, or there'll be an opportunity for a larger conversation. This would be the next step, just to get the bylaw going in place, right? Mr. Rosman?
I think my recommendation would be to bring it to the committee before it comes back to council. Because when it, if it comes back to council, there'll be, there would be an opportunity that council would be looking to approve it. And I think the engagement with the committee should happen beforehand.
So would the motion change then?
No, I don't think so. It's just a process.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Deputy Mayor McGee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would make a motion that council directs administration to draft a non-residential property tax incentive bylaw for new industrial and commercial development expansions and job creation. Once done, take to the economic development committee, and then brought back to council. The only question arising is timing and retroactive.
And I know that Council Sheriffs had presented an amendment to the motion. I'm not sure if you want to make a friendly amendment?
You mean, on the wording?
On the wording, yes. When we talked about the new and existing businesses.
I'd like to add the existing.
So for clarity, so that's, that would then be that council directs administration to draft a new, a non-residential property tax incentive bylaw for new and existing businesses, for new industrial and commercial development expansion and job creation. It's the addition of new and existing businesses to the motion.
Yeah, accepted.
Accepted, okay. Deputy Mayor McGee accepted the friendly amendment made by Council Sheriffs. Did you capture everything, Bree? Wonderful, thank you very much. Are there any, or are there, are there any comments, question, or debate on the motion?
The only question I had was on on retroactivity.
Yeah, so the the bylaws can be crafted to create the opportunity to look back. And so, for example, for the the one organization that is is currently asking for this, you would have to create the latitude in the bylaw that would go back to the, to the, if we're talking about job additions, to the, when the jobs were added. So there would be a retroactive piece to it.
Council Comanet?
I just wanted to mention that I'm fully in favor of the the motion itself, but the process, I think we need to discuss further.
Thank you for that. There was a motion on the table, and I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to 5.8, endorsement of White Court's FCM resolution, federal support for Canadian consumption of Canadian oil and gas resources.
All right. So as council will potentially remember, back at the beginning of May, the town was contacted by the town of White Court, who had submitted a resolution to FCM regarding federal support for Canadian consumption of Canadian oil and gas resources. Their resolution is attached. So their process is that they are putting this forward on the floor at FCM's conference next year. There is an opportunity for other municipalities to make resolutions in support. So the town of White Court has asked that the town of Drayton Valley support them in this initiative. So if council is prepared to do so today, a recommendation endorsing and to submit White Court's FCM resolution for the board review, sorry, that's maybe not the best way to do it, but to endorse White Court's FCM resolution and submit that endorsement to the board for its review at the September meeting of the FCM.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any questions for administration?
I had the question about problem mentioned conference next year, but I wanted to clarify that it's this year's conference. So you just finished, you just did.
Okay, perfect.
It's this year's conference, right, in September?
So the board that reviews resolutions meets in September, but it won't end up on the floor of the FCM until next June's conference.
Yeah, not AUMA, it's the FCM. Yeah, the one in June, so the next year.
Yeah.
Okay, got confused with the
They have a bunch of
Lots of acronyms.
Yes.
And AUMA is happening September. Are there any questions for administration, Council Comanet? No? Okay, you're just pushing your button off and on?
Just sort of make the motion so we can have
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, that council endows and submit White Court's attached resolution to FCM for the board's review at its September meeting this year.
Thank you very much for that. There is a motion on the table. I will ask, are there any comments, questions, or debate on the motion? No? I'll just comment that I think that it's important that that we are joining forces, I think, with White Court and other communities when it comes to our local energy resources, and how important they, you know, or the role that they play in our, in economy. We kind of get the bad rep of dirty oil, and that is probably the farthest from the truth. So I think that it's important that we stand up for Alberta and for our economy. So I think that this is something definitely that that I support. And there is a motion on the table, and I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Moving on to 5.9, strategic and corporate business plan. Did you hand that out to us? Oh, you got that, perfect. I was like, I don't see it here.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I'm pretty sure I reviewed that.
It's somewhere here. Oh, perfect, thank you.
All right. So this is the presentation version of the same strategic plan and corporate business plan that we looked at at the last meeting. So the 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 plan itself is unchanged from when council saw it last, but you can see that it it now has the the quality and prettiness that you'd expect of a professional document of this type. So we've put it in formal piece. There is a section of this document dedicated to each of the principal priorities that council identifies in its strategic plan. And then alongside that is a list of the projects that administration identified in the corporate business plan to achieve progress against those strategic priorities. Each of the projects contains a name, a project description, the lead department or division, a comment about budget and how it will be funded, and an estimated, or sorry, a completion deadline. So the expectation going forward, once it's approved, will be that administration is committed to achieve the dates that are outlined in this document for completion. If we run into circumstances that force us to change that, it will come as an update to council well ahead of the deadline. As soon as we understand that a project is threatening not to finish at its completion deadline, we'll come to council and request an extension. This process, once approved, allows us to do reporting to council. So we'll be able to report on these projects and the progress against them, as well as the impact against the strategic priorities. So this is a fundamental planning document for us. There is, as you page through, you will notice, there are a lot of projects, there is a lot of work in this plan. It is a multi-year plan, because it couldn't possibly be done all at once. You will see projects on there that are completed. They are, they are important pieces of the strategic plan that needed to be noted in this document, but administration has continued to work hard through the development to to see success on some of these projects already. So if council has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Our goal today will, or our hope today is that council will be comfortable with this document and approve the strategic and corporate business plan as presented.
Perfect, thank you very much. Are there any questions for administration? So this is the document that we've already looked at the draft. I'm just wondering, like the little, these little headlines, these are new, right? These little parts?
Yes, they are. So the the text additions and the photos, the headings, it's all part of the polishing up as the document. So as you read through, they, they just talk a little bit about what the strategy, what the strategic element there for council is. And then there, there is a piece at the beginning where we talk about what this process looked like and how this was developed. So it's all to help the reader understand what it is that we're trying to accomplish with this document.
And where will this document be available?
So it will be posted on the website. It will be very close at hand to all the managers within the organization, because, as I said, this is, this forms a large part of our work over the next few years, and it's important that we stay there. So it will be available to the public on the website, council will have copies, they will get regular updates on where we are on these programs, and our managers will be living by this plan for the next several years.
Council Comanet, did you have a question?
Yeah, no, thank you. Just, just the the discussion that we had last time, you know, exactly that, you know, the the administration will be living by this document, but the conversations that that we had, you know, some of the items that you introduced me. So you're mentioning about having, for the education piece, having international students, and we are talking about the second cohort in 2024. But, you know, the discussion which we had, and I would like to see, is that we would have more international students coming next year. And how do we achieve that, and those discussions, right? So I don't see that included here. Also, for the the welcoming center, for the inclusivity piece, is next year. So is there opportunity for us to have those discussions that we can, you know, speed things up up there as well? And I'm sure there's other aspects that there that we need to have discussion on about timelines and all that. So I don't see that that's captured here.
So there, I mean, this is the council's strategic plan and the corporate business plan. There is nothing in this document that would stop council from determining that we'd like to move ahead with other projects. So for example, our last item to look at a tax incentive program isn't captured in in the corporate business plan, but we can still go ahead and do other things. In terms of the timing of projects, there is, there is limited capacity for us to to change things around. Some of the pieces are needing to be in future years because they don't have approved budgets. So we need to get approved budgets before we can move ahead with some of these projects. Some of them, it's just a time piece, that we don't have the time with the other projects we have on the go this year. So we can certainly have those conversations. So we can certainly have those conversations. You know, in terms of the the education project specifically, I think it it's clearly the intent that we want to grow this program. We want to see more students, including our international student components. But the individual tasks inside those projects, the how we accomplish those things. I think the the big picture is that by the time that project is completed in 2024, that we will have accomplished those goals. So it doesn't mean that we won't start work sooner than that. And there is nothing that says that council can't come back and say, we'd like a more specific project to look to secure a second cohort in 2023. The difficulty will be the tight timeline.
Thank you for that. But again, my concern is that, you know, we haven't had that discussion at the committee level saying, you know, we will have or not have another cohort, or how do we extend the the current student capacity next year or anything like that? So administration had those discussions, and you're bringing it here for our review now. But I don't think that was directed by the committee or anything like that. So that's what I'm trying to understand where, you know, if the if the council's vision is to have more students 2023, whether it's international, local, domestic, then how do we achieve that? And if you are saying we are, we have 2022, we are going to have another cohort 2024. And if administration is going to live by that, then when are we going to have that discussion about, you know, also there are some other pieces as well?
Okay, yeah, I I understand the comment. And so I know, for example, the Education Committee has just gone through a strategic planning process. That plan will come back to council. At some point, council will be able to to make the changes to it that if there's anything that council feels is missing. And at that time, if there's a need to reevaluate. So the strategic plan and the corporate plan are not unchangeable. So when we we will sit down annually to review the strategic plan, make sure it still aligns with council priorities. So if if at that time when we sit down to review the strategic plan in the fall, we have an education plan that requires us to make some new priorities in education, they can be added. We can, we can still capture all those things. There's nothing fixed in these. But it's designed to capture the biggest view. So we completely understand that, yes, council has to have conversations about kind of what are the things that we're going to do. But this this gives us the work plan so that we have some concept and can stretch our planning from kind of month to month to year over year. We're looking for it.
Ms. Stone, did you want to add something? I just seen that you kind of went. Yeah, that could easily be just a typo. Excuse me. And I'm just wondering, like, when I look at the little headings, like, I'm just wondering, don't get too stuck on it, because when I do look at education, I see that the rural education consortium model is missing from like the little highlighted piece. Does that matter? Because it goes into town council has invested in a unique zero fee tuition, right? So I was just wondering if it, the town of Drayton Valley has been working hard creating a rural education consortium model that includes a zero fee tuition initiative, right? Like, something like that. Because I think the model itself is a really important key. So I don't want to pick it apart too much or have, like, if there's going to be amendments, or as we go, how how do you kind of see that?
Yeah, so those pieces at the side are essentially the storyboard to help the people that aren't as deeply involved in the projects, understand what it is that we're doing. I think I certainly take the feedback that we should capture the regional education consortium here. But, yeah, it is. It is understood that that is what we're doing. So we can, we can probably capture that before we put it out for publication.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Any other questions for administration? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, so let's say we pass this today. Going forward, or I guess, what's your plan? Do we, you know, if there's changes to this document, do we have to bring it back to council and review it? Because that can get extremely cumbersome, right? So this is our template. We just move forward with this and change as required.
Yeah, so so from my perspective, the corporate, the strategic plan, we do a health check annually to make sure that there isn't something else that has shifted up. But in general, you know, with this long range planning stuff, unless something has really shifted, we want to do our best to stay on track. Because if we if we go back and kind of do a new strategic plan every year, the corporate business plan changes, and it's really hard to kind of build the momentum on these projects. That being said, we'll sit down and do the strategic plan, make sure it's all in alignment, and there's nothing new that needs to be captured. We'll tweak the corporate business plan to accommodate any changes of the strategic plan. And then if there are other projects, we can deal with them outside of this. Because potentially something will come up that will address a strategic item that wasn't in the plan. We can still move ahead with that without it being captured in the plan. And the same thing, we may have other projects that come up that don't refer to the strategic plan, so wouldn't have been in this document that we're still going to move forward with. The the piece that this will give us some ability to manage, though, is once we have this in place, when we talk about adding a new component, we'll be able to have a conversation about, okay, how does this fit into the priorities? And if we if we tackle new project A, what does that mean for original projects B, C, and D? And so council can handle those as they come up. So it's not necessarily the need to make constant amendments to this document.
Yeah, I agree. But, you know, I guess when we're, you know, administratively doing things, because we do lots of things, right? You know, we should have in mind where, you know, the things that we're doing, where does it fit in here? And if we are doing all those things, if they don't fit in here, why don't they? And should it be a priority, right? So I guess when we're, when we're, you know, planning stuff, we should keep in mind this plan, right?
Absolutely. So one of the, one of the pieces that I've been starting to work through with the senior leadership team is the development of divisional and department plans. So now, once this is approved, we'll have an organizational plan. Understand where council wants us to go, and we'll have the basic roadmap of how we achieve those goals for council. The next piece will be for us to take a look internal to the organization and say, for example, to have Tom, say, for enforcement and emergency services, protective services. Here are the things we're going to do internally. So some of this is regular operations, some of it is not related to the strategic plan, but related to maintaining the departments. And then some of it is making sure that we're getting this work done. So it all comes, becomes part of our more specific planning pieces. But you're absolutely right. We have to keep this top of mind because it's very easy for, you know, outside places to suggest, oh, how about we do this? How about we do this? And there's lots of things that will attract council. But one of the things that, one of the reasons I'll keep it on the desk here, so that we can have a conversation. If we add five new things, we might need to talk about our ability to accomplish these. We might have to defer them. We might have to change our priorities, those types of things. But to keep that plan in mind all the time.
I just wonder how, like, you have it in quarters, right? And Alvera comes and she presents the quarterly, you know, finance budget. I wonder if we shouldn't maybe just have a touching in on quarterly, right, to just see, are we still on track? Are we following our, you know, strategic plan? Rather than, because, I mean, a year, and then you're, it might be.
Yeah. So the year is the review of the strategic plan. But you'll have quarterly updates on the corporate business plan. So you'll understand where we are.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor McGee?
I think I'm, I think I get it. For a document that goes out to the public on a PDF form, it just talks about all the interesting and nice things that we're going to do. And when you use the word roadmap, I thought, so this is a basic roadmap. I get that. And so then I'll go back to the departments. How do you fit into the roadmap? How do you fit? And does it follow the this strategic plan that the council has put together? And if so, where are they? And and report back? So otherwise, if you get into the details that that you could get into, it becomes a cumbersome document that wouldn't really fit with the public. It's sort of just what we do, and we do it regularly. And so I like it. I think it's it's a good document, and it looks good to me.
Thank you. Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion, perhaps? Counselor Evans? Sure.
I'll make the motion that council approved the strategic and corporate business plan as presented.
Thank you for that. Is, are there any comments, question, or debate on the motion? None? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Moving on to 5.10, rec and cost sharing Brazel County.
As just before we begin with that item, it is 20 minutes past 11:00. Do we want to go into the the closed session?
Okay.
Before lunch, and we can pick this up.
I didn't see it on here, so that's why I actually messaged you. So I was like, I'm not seeing it.
Oh, it's it's 6:08.
Oh, you're right. Okay, it just doesn't say closed there. Okay, yeah, you're right. Okay, rather than moving on to 5.10, we will move to 6.8. That is our CAO administration, a foip section 241A. Is there a member of council that would like to move us into closed? Thank you so much. Would you like to make a motion? So say, move us into closed under foip section 241A of the Freedom.
I I move that we move into closed per foip section 241A. Is that good?
Um, I just have one question. Cody was supposed to come back for a third reading with the bylaw, right? Is that ready? Yeah, before we go into closed and lunch, should we hold him up, or should we just get it done?
I think the best thing to do will be to go in camera. Because I, a couple of times where we've managed to get into camera by 11 o'clock, we can clear these out. And then we can have everybody come back in the afternoon.
At 1:00. Okay, sure. Okay, there, Counselor Clark has put a motion on the table to move us into closed under 241A. All in favor? That is carried. We'll reconvene the meeting at 1:29 PM, and we are, I guess we didn't make a motion to come out of closed, so maybe can I get a motion from a counselor to move us out of closed? Counselor Kamana, thank you for that. All in favor? Wonderful. And that is at 1:29 PM. And coming out of closed, there is a motion that needs to be made. Is there a council that would like to make that motion? Counselor Clark? Okay, do you, off my.
I have a motion to direct administration to work on a wall of fame. So 21.
That's the one that you wanted. You're like, is that it? That was it? That is to work on a wall of fame. Is that good?
So just to clarify, so this is the development of a wall of fame program?
Program, yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Program at the end of that. That's what totally what he said is, I think he shut his mic off.
Just making sure that's what you said.
Program, shut the mic off. Okay. So there is a motion on the table to direct administration to work on a wall of fame program from Counselor Clark, and I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. And there is also an addition coming out of closed. The addition will be 5.12 for tax relief for noble. Okay, and I think that was it, right?
So to do an addition, once the
You need a motion?
Agenda's been adopted, we need a motion.
Okay, perfect. Can I get a counselor that would like to make that addition to the agenda? Counselor Sharif?
I'd like to make a motion that we add 5.12. It's a tax relief for noble growth.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried, and we're going to move back to 5.6, and we are going to talk about the community standards bylaw, and we will be looking for third reading here. Well, welcome back. Thank you for being so patient. Oh, you didn't have to. Earl would not be happy with that.
Thank you. Hello again. So while I was gone, I was able to essentially take the redlined bylaw and make all the, make all the red go away, and it's now black. And with that, the addition of the seven days consecutive has been changed to cumulative.
Perfect. Thank you for that. That was the only amendment to the bylaw, right?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. So in front of us, we have the amended community standards bylaw, bylaw number 2022-06P, and we are looking for a counselor to give a third reading. Are there any questions for administration? None? Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion for a third reading? Counselor Raffin, it's just some nodding. Maybe Counselor Clark would like to make that. Thank you. Counselor Clark? It's up there, too.
All right, I make a motion that council gives third reading to propose community standards bylaw 2022-06P as amended.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Is there any questions, comment, or debate on the motion? None? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much for that. Now jumping back on the agenda to 510, rec and cost sharing Brazel County. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, council. As council is aware, we have for some time been negotiating cost sharing arrangements with Brazu County as part of our community intermunicipal collaboration framework. I have, in speaking with the CAO from Brazu County, come to understand that the county is prepared to sign these agreements. So the first agreement in front of you today is the recreation cost sharing agreement. So when you look through the agreement, the vast majority of the agreement was prepared as a joint submission by both legal councils as part of the arbitration process. The highlighted yellow pieces are the pieces resulting from the decision of the arbitrator. So the agreements are consistent with the arbitration agreement. And it is my understanding that we are making a motion to have these signed on behalf of the municipality today. The county will be looking to do that at their next council meeting on July the 5th. And as long as all of that continues smooth, I expect when we come back for the meeting on July 20th, that we will have the copy of the ICF bylaw amended to include the two agreements we approved today. And so we have reached out to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. They understand that we've come to agreement, and now we're just moving through the legislative process of getting everything signed. So it's an exciting day to be able to say to council that we're ready to pass these, adopt these agreements and get them signed.
Thank you very much for that. Yes, exactly. It's a very exciting day to finally put. It's a very exciting day to finally put some closure on this and move forward. Recreation is very important to our residents in the community, and to have an agreement in place is even more important. So I'm very pleased, as I'm sure all of counsel is, that we can move forward with the ICF now and start focusing on other ways we can expanding recreation and looking at some great ideas that we can be increasing revenue there and just continuing offering. We have a new pool that's being built, so it's very exciting. There's a lot of exciting things in the community that are happening, so very exciting. A question for me. I will ask other questions from counsel as well. So the terms of the agreement commences on April 1st and expires on March 31st. Why is that, since it's taken so long to come to this agreement? Do we just kind of fall in the same, I guess, calendar as the initial ICF review, an IDP review? Is that kind of why?
Yeah, so the decision of the arbitrator was that the five-year agreement would be consistent with the ICF timeline. So it began in 2020 and continues to 2024.
Okay. And then the retroactive payment goes back to the 2020 and then to the 2024?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions for administration? Counselor Gomana?
Sorry. No, I just wanted to echo Nancy. Your comments, you know, with the previous council and this council, you know, we pushed forward with what's best for the community that we thought. And then, you know, it's nice to see that the town has succeeded. So on top of that, about the, I guess, putting this out to the community, do we have kind of a planned communication piece going out?
We will have a communication piece goes out. That will go out. The conclusion of this was quite quickly. It just happened the last couple of days. And so I don't think we have something ready to go this afternoon. But my thought is that by the time the county has their council meeting next week, we should be, have something out.
Thank you.
Perfect. Deputy Mayor McGee?
Just on the note from Counselor Gomana, then we would probably coordinate the release of information between the two, the county and the town. I would think that makes better sense, too, right?
That would be my desire. If we could do a joint communication announcing the conclusion of this process, I think it'd be great for both communities.
Right, and so if I look at 4.15, hence, for clarity, the county has paid the town 454. Required contribution for 2020 was 104, so there's, the town is still owed a shortfall of 54591. Is that, is there another one to follow? Or is that, is that the only catch-up?
So there is also 2021. So the clause, the agreement is clear that both years have to be caught up because they are included, but it just details the 2020 for the purpose of the calculation.
All right.
So, but we will, we will receive the balance payment for 2020 and 2021.
Thank you.
Okay, and so what are you looking? You're looking for a motion, or what are we looking for?
A motion to approve, sorry, approve the recreation culture cost-sharing agreement with Brazu County. And with that, we'd then be able to sign the agreements.
A motion to approve the recreation cost-sharing agreement with Brazel County?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a council member that would like to make that motion? Counselor Gomana?
Yeah, thank you. I'll make that motion to approve the recreation cost-sharing agreement with Brazu County.
Thank you very much. Very exciting motion. Is there any comment, question, or debate on the motion? Just some fireworks I wish we could shoot off right now, but I'm pretending that we're shooting off confetti and fireworks right now. 10,000, yeah, yeah. We'll even cover the cost. Wonderful. There is a motion to approve the recreation cost-sharing agreement with Brazel County. All in favor? That is carried. That is happily carried. Okay, and now we're moving on to 5.11, ECDC cost-sharing with Brazel County.
Thank you. So that went so well, let's try it again. This is a cost-sharing agreement with regard to the ECDC. So again, this is the non-highlighted portions of the document were part of the joint submission. They follow very much in the form of the agreement we saw in recreation cost share. The highlighted portions are the pieces outlined in the decision. The agreement is a little bit different because obviously the single function means it's a little bit smaller, requires less detail to maintain. But essentially, we're seeing the same thing here. So we have an agreement. We are entering in for cost share. Once council approves this agreement, we will sign them at the same timeline for the county, and then we will add them to the ICF at the end of July.
Wonderful, thank you. Are there any questions for administration? Is there, Deputy Mayor McGee?
Madam Mayor, when we see intentionally deleted, is that something which should be drawn to our attention, or is it intentionally deleted?
So that was in the review by the two lawyers. So I assume it refers to sections that were in. So originally, these two were drafted by the lawyers as a common document. So I believe the pieces that you're seeing intentionally deleted are being marked for when the lawyers compare the two documents to make sure that they are consistent with one another, and they are clauses that don't apply to the ECDC conversation. Yeah, so that could, that would relate to earlier versions.
Okay, perfect. So there'll be, we're looking for another motion here. The motion will be similar, or the recommended motion will be to approve the ECDC cost-sharing agreement with Brazel County or to not approve it. So is there a member of council that would like to make that motion? Deputy Mayor McGee?
Madam Mayor, I would make that motion that we agree. And the wording is the same as the top, the other one? Are you all right with that? Okay.
So Deputy Mayor McGee made a motion to approve the ECDC cost-sharing agreement with Brazel County. Are there any questions, comment, or debate on the motion? No, I just want to add that, you know, when we started down this path for cost-sharing with Brazel County, we felt like ECDC was one of those things that we wanted to highlight. Drayton Valley is very unique when it comes to childcare. We're one of the very few municipalities in Alberta that do have a service like this. So we feel very privileged to be able to offer childcare to our community. And we felt that when we looked at the residents, both in Brazel County and Drayton Valley, that were utilizing the services, that it was a 50/50, if not even a little bit higher, numbers coming from Brazel County. And we felt that it was a cost that needed to be shared, and we thought that it was definitely a service that we valued. And we think that's as important as recreation is just as important. So seeing this come to fruition is another very exciting motion. So there is a motion on the table, and I'll ask all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you very much. More fireworks and confetti coming. And Bree's capturing that all in the minutes. Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move to 5.12 for tax relief for Noble. And I will remove myself for apprehension of bias. And I would ask that Deputy Mayor McGee please step in in my absence.
Good afternoon. So this is the 2022 property tax forgiveness request by Noble Growth Alberta Limited Partnership. So Noble Growth Alberta Limited Partnership is a cannabis production and distribution facility seeking to continue its operations in Drayton Valley. The company offers diversification and expansion to our local economy and currently employs over 70 people. Administration has received a request from Noble Growth Alberta Limited Partnership for the forgiveness of the 2022 municipal property taxes for roll number 70417600. The company sent a letter in 2019 asking for five years of tax forgiveness. Council stated that the request would be renewed annually. Council forgave the 2022, or sorry, 2020 municipal taxes for the roll number 70417600, registered under Twin West Ventures, Inc., totaling $46,631.81. In 2021, council forgave the municipal taxes totaling $45,962.37. The 2022 municipal taxes in question are $47,607.85. Any further questions?
Questions, counsel?
You ready to make a motion?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the council approved the forgiveness of municipal taxes for tax roll 70417600 for the 2022 year for the total of $47,607.85.
Yeah, we were just talking now about timing. As opposed to one year? Two. So a total of five years? Original quest was for five? And we gave two, so it's additional three coming this year?
Yes, so additional 2023 and then 2024 as well? Okay, I'll just read it again. I'll make a motion that the council approved the forgiveness of municipal taxes for the tax roll 70417600 for the year 2022 for the amount of $47,607.85. In addition, they will receive a tax break in year 2023 and 2024. Not good enough?
I might suggest clarification for 2023 and 24, that it's the municipal portion.
A municipal portion, okay.
That's the intention. So the amount of $47,000 is the municipal portion only. And if we clarify that, although we don't know what the specific number will be, it will clarify for administration what council's looking for.
Okay, Bree, you got that? Or do I need to? Yeah, okay.
Motion on the floor? Counselor Gomana?
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, it was, we had a visit to Noble Growth Corp. a couple of weeks ago. It's great to see how they've started the operations, and they are employing about, I would believe about 40, almost 80 employees already, and they're growing. So it's great to see, and it's an industry that's new to Drayton Valley. It's diverse, and we would need to attract more and more of those to our community. And in a town of Drayton Valley, we have been with them for the last couple of years. You know, it mentions that a five-year conversation, which unfortunately, I can't recall that we had that conversation, or there's no documentation that I went through that says it's a five-year commitment. It's great to see that the business is doing great. The employment that increased. But I think we need to have a greater discussion about these tax forgivenesses. How do we incorporate as a whole, not one-offs? We need to create a criteria where we can cater to other industries and other businesses in town as well, because I'm sure we will get a lot of feedback after this conversation. We are asking the questions, why not us? So, you know, like I said, I'm somebody of the business and all of that, but I'm concerned about the tax forgiveness itself because we have given them two years' tax forgiveness already. I, don't get me wrong, I support the diversification. I support that we need to continue diversifying our economy, but we need to have that criteria where we can put out there the framework of that, the town support. So hence, you know, I'm not somebody of the tax break, but I'm somebody of creating a framework for that. Thank you.
On that note, we have also had a lengthy discussion on a non-residential property tax incentives bylaw for new industrial and commercial development expansions that we will see in the next coming months, which would allow people to put a package together that everyone can get behind. We also know that the issue for Noble was, of course, federal licensing. They really didn't get licensed, and it took a lot longer than they expected. And so I'm in support of this diversification and the number of jobs. I can speak to it, to people who are asking me that obvious question of why not us? Questions? All in favor? Opposed? All right, carried.
Thank you. Okay, so it looks like we have made it through all of the decision items. Is that correct? I don't think I missed anything?
That's all of them, yes.
Okay, perfect. We'll move into our department reports. So 6.1, planning and growth, Ken White. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, your worship council. I don't have a formal report, but I just wanted to touch on three things quickly. Right now, I have kind of a lull in our business licensing activity in June, but that's probably unexpected, considering July 4th, there'll be half price. So as we move into six months. I will report that our manufactured homes architectural controls amendment is on plan for July 20th meeting. That is ready to go forward. And just to introduce that, let counsel know that I'll be, I have a new development planner coming on staff in July as well. So I'll tag him along at the next council meeting.
Very exciting, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Foyt? Deputy Mayor McGee?
And so we have three then? Because I think we still have Luani working with you.
Yeah, Luani's been on contract.
Yeah.
For us, so he'll be moving off of that. I've got some other things for him to do, too.
So he's still with us? So we'll have three in the planning department? Or?
Well, yeah, we have, we have a permanent clerk, and we'll have a development planner, and then Luani's on contract as needed.
Wonderful. Well, very. Well, I'm very excited to see the new person that's coming on board. Thank you very much for your update. Doesn't look like anybody has any questions. One more? Oh, one more. Oh, your mic.
Dear Meadows, have we, is that started? Have we come to an agreement?
We haven't heard back from the developer. I understand he might be in Belize doing work down there. But everything is, the ball's in his court. We're working on the utility right away, and that agreement's been signed, so it's basically ready to receive an application.
And how far have we advanced the sale of land? We have a number of parcels that we looked at. Is that a report coming back to us? Just he could remind me.
That, yeah, that, the plan for that was to do a support study for the municipal development plan, and when we get that, that's something that will be starting very soon.
Will be starting the plan very soon? Or will we be signed?
Both. The plan, the municipal development plan, now that we can put some resources to that, and that's part of the municipal development plan, that strategy for sale.
So typically, the municipal development plan can take up to a year or two kind of get done. What type of timeline are you looking at for that?
We, I believe the initial stages, such as the visioning, and there's been some public engagement already, so we'll have to go back and see what's of value and see where we can start off. I don't believe we need to start right at the beginning.
And are we building the majority of that in-house?
Yes, yes. Maybe where I'd be directing some of Luwani's resources to.
Save a little bit of money. Any other questions? No? Well, thank you very much for your report.
Okay.
Moving on to 6.2, municipal services department report. Just says agenda item report. It doesn't say your name. That's you. Did we change the name of it?
So the agenda item report is just the placeholder that the system puts in. If you look at all the decision items, they have the same agenda item report and then an identifier.
Yeah, because there was no name here, and that's why I was like, is this different than?
Yeah. So it looks a little different today, because it's only municipal services that has a formal written report in the package.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. Okay.
Great.
Well, good afternoon, thank you.
Thank you, council. Good afternoon. So as you can see, the report in front of you guys, I'd be open to any questions you guys have. The only two things that are not on here that I would like to add is the South Sandy Dump Drainage. That project, well, I won't even call it a project, is basically culvert and slope drainage begins today. So hopefully, within the next couple of days here, we'll see that problem totally gone. We were looking at a variety of solutions and got competitive quotes out there, and we awarded it with the lowest one. So hopefully, that problem will disappear. And then finally, for tree planting, I have a little update from our arborist. So if council remembers last update, we've ordered about $16,000 worth of new trees, and we've planted 19 green ash, Toba Hawthorn, several types of crabapple up the cemetery. And they're currently starting at Ivan To Park with a mixture of Brandon Elm Burr oak and crabapple. I'm not sure what all these different types of trees mean. He's kind of an expert, but I, the municipality's looking for easily manageable trees that don't get to, you know, massive sizes, you know, the roots, you know, kind of a little bit more of a, more healthier blend that still looks nice. So anyways, even though we still have a lot of dead trees out there, we are fearishly working to get them all replaced and get it looking a lot more beautiful. It just takes a bit of time, so. Does council have any questions for that or the rest of my report?
Thank you. Any questions for Owen? Oh, everybody must just.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, just one. You talked a little some time ago about Peace Park and the fencing. Yes. And our responsibility.
Yes.
Are we on it, or?
That's coming next council meeting. Yeah.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Moving along, 6.3, community services and FCSS Hans von Klaveren. And I said it perfect today, didn't I? Come on down.
So in our updates, you've seen there was nothing submitted on paper, a little bit of changes, of course, in our program for our, let's see, reporting to council. But for the community side, Canada Day, of course, July 1st is coming up. All the events are being planned, and it's going to be a great day. We are just waiting, of course, what the weather is going to do, whether it's going to be, some of the activity is going to be inside, but we'll let the community, of course, know. The board tour will be done on May, sorry, Monday, the 4th for the FCSS site, so we'll take council around on Monday. You know that, of course, already, and some of you will be attending. The shelter pods will be part of that little tour as well. And we have seen, of course, since the opening, not a lot of people utilizing shelters yet, but we have had clients in. And as of today, we are looking into opening all the shelter pods already, so going from five to close to our total of 12. As you know, Emily Hickman, she's no longer with us, but we are posing for temporary position to make sure that that function is, of course, taken care of as well. And that has to do, of course, with our affordable housing and our possibility to service our community in that sense as well. The Round Dance is confirmed for September 30th. It's a big event that we are able to do with our indigenous community and for, of course, that's Aboriginals, Indigenous Day, September 30th. Father's Day event, June 22nd. We did see that happen, it was a week later, but thank you for showing up and being part of that event as well at our ECDC. I can tell you that the midway that we had recently in the last weekend, over 1,500 wristbands were distributed, so that was a good event, and the Lions Club was very happy with the attendance, and the weather was, for most of the time, very cooperative on that. Other events that this group, of course, does as well, and there's a lot happening throughout the summer, we see July 16, Rock and Roar is happening. And besides that, there are a lot of events happen. We did a photo shoot at the Mackenzie Park, because they were initiator, initiators of the playground enhancement, basically, we did over there. So we took a photo, because we want to make sure that we recognize, of course, the partnerships that we do with each other and what those groups do for the community. For the pool, small update over there, you know the most likely that June 4th and 5th was the Canadian Pool Lifesaving Championships, where delegation from our JLC went, and they became second for the Canadian Championships. So it's a very well, nice achievement, of course, and it's something to celebrate, of course, when we see that more than a dozen other teams from all over Canada compete for that prestigious awards over there that happened. We hired a pool manager, a new pool manager, that will help us basically focusing on starting up our pool facility in very well collaboration, of course, with our current staff that we have. And there's a lot to do, but we're happy that she will start in August to make sure that we are hopefully in good and easy transition, but it's never going to be easy, of course, with a big facility like this that will open up, of course, planning still in October. Like I said, there's a lot of events happening throughout the community, and we're happy to see organizing groups and partnerships well that can do stuff basically a little bit different than the last two years. So we're in business.
Fantastic. Well, lots of exciting news, lots happening.
Right.
Are there any questions for administration? Deputy Mayor McGee?
I went by the pods last night, and just, and the gate's locked. I assume it's locked, and it was around 7:00, 7:30. So can you remind me of when you can actually access and who opens the gate and how? Because it wasn't shortly after that we got big downpour.
Didn't you say?
So I don't know where people were or how people got out of that rain, but can you remind me how it works?
Thank you for that question, and through the chair, to the rest of council. So there's two gates over there. There's a big gate, basically a vehicle gate, that will be closed, that's only, let's say, opened by us for maintenance or cleaning. So there's a main gate straight next to the building that's open 24/7, so it always will be open. But the pods themselves can be accessed at 8:00 PM in the evening. So the pods themselves cannot be earlier accessed than 8:00 PM in the evening till 11:00 PM, but the gate itself or the compound is open the whole time. Hope that answers that.
It does, right. And have we been asked to consider the parking lot at the Omniplex for race cars, or is that one that you mentioned already? Little race cars, or I'm not sure what they do, but.
I'll pass it on.
So there was a group that had previously done, I'm not sure the details of what it is that they've done, but they've used the Omniplex parking lot previously, and they have reached out to us to find out about using that facility again. So I don't know if there's anybody here that's previously participated, but it's some sort of racing organization that does these events throughout the region. They've done them very successfully here in Drayton Valley in the past, and with COVID behind us, they're excited to get back to the, to their business. So they're hoping to do that again. So that request come in, and we're in the process of.
Yeah, it's a combination, too, of, I think, show and shine. There's quite a bit of activity, and I think it's only a couple of weeks away. I think it's fairly quick coming, so.
Is that Tom Hendricks?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's the same gentleman, then? Coming forward. Did you have any other questions?
Done.
Okay. Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. Yeah, we were at the roundhouse, and myself, and I think Bill and was Colin, I think you dropped by, but it was, it was great to see, very well attended and all that, so kudos to your team to support the youth committee there to get that up undergoing. Couple of questions, and the first one is, you know, thinking of Tom's line about the shelter pods, just wanted to know how's it's been utilized so far. I know it's a short period of time, but, you know, it's, are we getting some traction there? Secondly, would like to know a little bit more about the situation in Urbanada and whether we've kind of settled that down as well. And thank you for that question, and through the chair, to the rest of council, and Counselor Kamana. So the traction, of course, of the shelter pods is very depending on getting the, let's say, intended clientele or people that experience homelessness to get to know it. So we've got the word out, we've seen so far as I know, a couple of days ago, the first usage overnight, so that means we have had a couple in there already. But it's basically a word of mouth, of course, and basically working with the groups, the associations that help us out to get the word out. So that includes the RCP, of course. So we get some traction, and the word is out, and it's getting used. And for Urbanada, since, of course, our takeover of the management, we are dealing with certain, let's say, individuals and people that have been now, one, there's one eviction notice handed out. That means that there's process and the period of time, of course, that it takes, which will help us, let's say, get a handle on the unauthorized usage of the facility. And in communication with the other residents, of course, it's very important to make sure that everybody feels supported, safe, and we do the right thing to make sure that we utilize the building for its intent. And yes, we are on top of it and working with the RCP and law enforcement wherever needed as well.
Okay, any other questions? For Canada Day that's happening, I had suggested that an email go out to include administration as well to attend the float, so hopefully I'll see lots of administration as well as their kids and everybody out on the float. I'm very excited. What time should council kind of be there, and where are we lining up, and what's kind of the plan for Friday? Just so we all kind of know, do you know? Or typically, I'm thinking in the past. So yeah, it's in our calendar. Okay, perfect. So all the details are in our calendar, so show up before 10:00, before we proceed, and bring your kids, and encouraging administration to spread the word, and everybody bring their kids and come, and it'll be very exciting. Very excited for that. Thank you very much. Lots of exciting things. Looking forward to the Round Dance September 30th, and very excited, too, to hear that the Lions Club is kind of back and alive and kind of out and about. It was nice to see them down at the rodeo grounds, and I see that they have a concert that they're going to be running here in July. So it's nice, because I know that there hasn't been a lot happening with their club over the last few years, so it's nice that some events are happening, they're out and about, and that they're having a lot of, a lot of uptake for everything that they're doing. So it's very good to see. So thank you very much for your report. Moving on to 6.4, economic development department report.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
So I'll start with economic development. I understand that we may have a tentative date for our economic development strategic planning session. Is that right? So that's very exciting. I'm glad to see that this is getting underway. And then also with this, I'll just hit on some highlights. A week or so ago, Marie Lynn attended the Site Selector Conference in White Court, and she was very pleased with the contacts that she had made out of there. And most importantly, she was able to connect with the gentleman that we'll be working with on our strategic planning session. So that was well worth her time to go up there, and so I'm pleased that that's the outcome, and we can get moving on that. Still continuing with our business visits, and Marie Lynn has informed me that we just have one more business to visit to finish off our 2021 business licenses, and then we can hit all the ones that have started up this year. So that's good that we're just chewing down those, those lists. So I'm glad to see that's happening. On the education front, so the, Tanya's still working with Brooks to compile all the information that we had gathered, the committee meeting that we had a little while ago, to kind of help set the vision and strategic direction for council's consideration. With the U of A research team, they have hired a new part-time research assistant to work on the zero-fee project and lead engagement with past Drayton Valley international students to gain a better insight into their experience. So that's been really nice to see. We also have our, can't remember what we're going to call it, the person that's going to be working with our internationals and our local students to help connect them with local resources, planning events. So we finally got that sorted out, and it's been advertised, so I'm just waiting to get some really good applications, and we can hopefully have them starting soon, and we'll be ready to welcome everybody in September. On the energy front, so Aisha was here with a number of items this morning, so she is going to be submitting our nomination to Alberta municipalities for the food cycler project, and so hopefully we'll, we'll get some good news out of that. The Agents of Change project, as she was mentioning, so following council's decision, Aisha will move forward with planning for the garden party in mid-July. So that's going to be really good to see. And also, in the last week, Aisha has visited three different schools to plan escape rooms, and I think it had a focus on climate change and waste diversion. So she's been working with, I believe, grade four students to kind of build their knowledge on that. So she's been pretty busy with that. So that's kind of it in a nutshell for me, if there's any questions.
Thank you very much. Lots of exciting things. Any questions for administration? No? Oh, Counselor Clark?
So this kind of relates to the strategic plan.
Yep.
The regional.
The regional steward funding that goes to Norquest currently, right?
Yep.
Do we have any plans or is that in the mix in terms of something to pursue? As opposed, you know, just getting it away from Norquest is, I guess, what I'm.
Like to determine who our regional steward is.
No, no, to see if we can, you know, because technically we don't really have a regional steward. We don't interface with them. We don't do anything with them. Instead of them getting that funding, can we pursue that?
I know that that's been talked about in the past. And I believe, I don't know if it was you Nancy, had met with the ministry a couple of times to start that conversation with them about diverting those dollars back to the municipality rather than the post-secondary that previously was our, our steward. Because we don't have one. So I know that those conversations has happened. So yeah, that's, we can definitely keep pursuing that with the ministry.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we have had several of those conversations. And Bree just put together a most recent letter and it's actually captured in there. So we'll be able to exactly, and the wording of that is that we'd like to have a partnership when it comes financially. So we'll be pushing for another meeting with the minister. And I know that the Alberta government has given out a lot of money when it comes to post-secondary education in the last couple of months in regards to creating jobs and where there's labor shortage gaps and all sorts of things. And we seem to be getting, getting missed all the time. We're all Drayton Valley and we've been working very hard to build this model. So we'll be knocking on their door to make sure that they're hearing what we're saying and we're pursuing some of that. Because yeah, Norquest is no longer our regional steward and we have many amazing partners at the table that we want to be celebrating and continuing down the education path for.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Jan? Counselor Gomana?
Yeah, thank you. No, I agree with that comment. You know, Norquest hasn't been part of the community for some time now. So we need to keep pushing the province for funding for that. Just a question about the, the student support position that we've advertised for. Just wondering, is it kind of a co-position with Olds College and any other? Or it's just a fully town position?
It was part of our contractual obligations with Olds that we have a support person on staff to help not only the, the international students, help them integrate to life here in Drayton Valley and in Canada, but then also to provide that level of support that some of our local students may need. So, yeah.
So is that position, is that split? Like are we, because I know we talked about having somebody at the front desk there to be, you know, talking to the people that are coming in, answering calls and stuff like that. So is it kind of a split position or not?
A little bit, like obviously they will be able to, you know, answer the phones. And if somebody comes in and it's like, oh, you know, where's the chamber or something? Like they can do those kinds of duties and things like that. When it comes to like the event side of things, outside of the events that we're planning for our internationals, we have our events team on staff already to, to manage those. So, so that's, that's all well looked after. So this person will just be kind of doing like light duties when it comes to things like that. But so when somebody comes into the CTC, there'll be somebody sitting there to welcome you in and help, help point you in the right direction.
Good. So if they have a question and like, let's say, about the University of Alberta, will they be able to answer that question as well or just pertaining to Olds?
They can direct them to Tanya and then she can, she can take it from there. But just, it's just nice to have that point person come in. But then Tanya should be able to answer the rest of those kinds of questions.
Absolutely. Perfect. Any other questions? Oh, wonderful. Well, thank you very much. Moving on to 6.5 Protective and Emergency Services, Mr. Thompson. Good afternoon. We've been waiting patiently.
Counsel. It's been a bit of a day.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to take some time to talk to council about some activities that have been going on with enforcement services. As council is aware, we've had numerous complaints about unsightly properties. So I just want to give council a bit of an update. We issued 10 compliance notices last week. They all went out in the mail. Seven properties of, out of the 10 are now in compliance. Two of them are half done, which means half of the grass is mowed. Not sure why, but either rain or ran out of gas or something, I'm not sure. But half, half of them got half of it done. And then we have one where we're still haven't seen anything done, which we will be following up with. We also have been working on homeless camps. We, our first one last week was to tackle the Debe lands. So we went in there, we moved the individuals out of that area. We then cleaned up the property. So that is now taken care of. This week, we were over at the homeless camp behind Celebrity Estates. And we went in there and cleaned that one up as well. And we are also now working with the individuals that are camped out by the dump. They, they are willing to work with us. They, they requested a dumpster so that they could put all their garbage and stuff in the dumpster. So we have delivered a dumpster for them. So hopefully we will see some action on that one. So we are getting to these things. There is a cost to all of this. Currently, we have put about $900 in costs into, from last week's events into this. And it's taken us about 25 man-hours to, to deal with these properties. A key point to make council aware is we have been moving these homeless camps. But be fully prepared that I would expect to see them move back into these areas at some point in time unless we come up with a plan to have a designated site. I recognize that we do have the pods, pods that the homeless are directed to go to, but we do still have some individuals that prefer to live rough. And so at some point, we're going to have to come up with a plan to, to deal with that. Because we're just going to keep chasing these people from one place to the next if we, we don't have a further discussion about that. But that, that's my report.
Well, thank you very much for that. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Counselor Sheriff?
So for now, let's say you're asking them to leave a certain area. Where are they going? Where's all their stuff being kept?
That's a good question. And that's the issue that we are having. Before the pods were open, we had a real dilemma. Because we, in order for us to move people off of public land, we have to have a designated place for them to go. So that was our reluctance in actually moving people out of these public areas. Now that we have the pods, we are now able to direct them to the pods, which is what we are doing. But we can't force people to go there. So, but that is the direction that we are giving them to, to move towards the pods. So that's, but I can't tell you exactly if that's where they're actually going. But that's what the, the recommendation is that we're providing for them.
Okay. Deputy Mayor McGee?
Tom, we currently are working on a bylaw on unsightly properties and that bylaw will carry through and give us more teeth. And yet I had no idea that you were going out to, or putting either signs on or phoning people about the unsightly properties. But I went by a number of them and they were, they're done. And it looks outstanding. Maybe not outstanding, but it looks better. How were we able to do that without having a bylaw in place?
The, it wasn't like we weren't able to do it. It was just a very long, drawn-out, tedious process. For example, for us to do that, we had to send out registered mail to each of those properties. And with that, it comes a cost. It's about $13 per letter that we sent out. So there is cost involved in that. The way the new bylaw is written, we are now able to do more door knocking and door hangers as opposed to actually having to go to that legal step of mailing things out. So we were able to increase our efficiency in, in dealing with these faster and making, making the changes when, when they're needed. So that's going to be a key improvement for us as well. People will have 30 days after they get the notice to actually do the cleanup. So again, that's another delay. If someone wants to dig in their heels, it's, it takes time for all of this to happen. So by, by having the new bylaw now, we are able to make that whole process much more efficient and quicker so we can get these things done faster. So that was the key, key part of that.
And what I also noticed is, and I didn't get up to look at, but there, on the front windows now, there's, there's a white notice of some sort. Is that our notice or is it somebody else's notice?
I know that would be part and parcel of ours, yeah.
And that notice would say, you got to clean this up?
Correct.
Okay. Great, great news. Flabbergasted. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful news. Thank you for doing this. It's very appreciated. It's fantastic to hear that, you know, you went out and gave 10 compliance notices and seven of those complied and then two half. And then one, you know, is, well, unsure. I think those are pretty good odds. And I think that hopefully moving forward, people know that we're out and we're enforcing now and those 10 homes, you know, aren't hopefully going to repeat this again. You're going to have to revisit. So maybe as the weeks progress, you're only going out giving one notice, right? That's what I'm hoping, you know, the intention is. When it comes to the homeless camps, what did we do in the past? Because we used to take down the camps all the time, right? And so what were we saying to the individuals? Like, are we saying, because it just seems like it's a little bit different this time. And it seems like we do have more camps and it seems like there hasn't been enforcement. So how is it different this time than it's been in the past?
A lot of the change that has occurred, has occurred in the last year and it's, and it's because of the, the laws or the, the decisions that have been made in particularly in British Columbia, where decisions in the courts have allowed homeless to actually live in public areas. Up until that point, it was, it was pretty much kind of the Wild West where you could remove people and, and there wasn't really any ramifications of that. But now there's, there's a lot more legal ramifications around that where you have to designate an area for them to go or a place for them to go. So that was kind of the key part that came out of that, the civil law lawsuits and stuff that went on in British Columbia. I mean, obviously in Alberta, Alberta's a little bit different. We're a little bit more relaxed with our laws. But at the same point in time, we don't want to run into legal ramifications if we're not doing it properly. So that's, that's pretty much the big change that, that happened.
And then when you're going and you're doing the removal and the cleanup, are you saying to individuals if they're there, if you come back, you will be fined? Or how is it being communicated to them so they're not hopefully setting up shop again or coming back to the same area?
A lot of it is, is we're trying to avoid threats to the individuals. We're trying to encourage them to, to go to the, to the pods. And it's, it's more of a positive proactive campaign as opposed to saying, don't come back or else. We, we recognize that there are certain individuals that will be back and it doesn't matter what we say to them. And if that happens, they will, they will be fined and, and go through that process with them. But for the most part, we're trying to be more on a positive note and encourage them to, to move to the pods.
Yeah, and it's great that the pods are open now that they have that, that option of going there, right? So hopefully we see that usage start to go up and as the camps start to come down. And then I think people in the community will be able to appreciate that they're seeing this enforcement, right? Like Tom said, it's, it's great to see. So great, great work. Thank you very much for, for everything. Anything else? Well, thank you very much. We'll move on to Corporate Services and Finance, Mr. Thompson. You don't have anything? Okay. Wonderful. And 6.7 Communications, Ms. Stone, this is you again.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
Okay, we have a very busy couple of weeks coming up and Ms. Baker is on holidays for three weeks. So, all right. So the most exciting thing, Canada Day is coming up. So we have information going out about the road closures, where the parade is going to be, pancake breakfast, when the fireworks are going to be. I know it just says dusk on there, but last year I got a number of very late messages from the public. So if anybody's listening, as soon as it's dark enough for them to go off, they will.
So for counselors, if you can be communicating that everywhere, everybody you're talking, we have a, I think Cora had said between 10:45 to 11:15 is kind of the window. But when dusk happens, that's when.
Yep. And also we'll be posting about our holiday hours because of course, most of our facilities will be closed that day. We're also promoting our Bike Index program, our Water Disconnect program, like why that is important. Of course, with all the rain that we've been having, I, hopefully this is more top of everybody's mind about, you know, why it is important and, and how to go about doing it. Kelsey's put together some, some easy to follow graphics about how to at least disconnect, like your downspout from, from that. We have ongoing posts about hydrant flushing. And we have our Enforcement Services Survey running until July 6. So if anybody has yet to do that, I encourage you to do so. We are continuing to post our cultural holidays. It was St. John Baptist Day on June 24th. And we will be, Cody and I will be talking about our education campaign on the new Community Services Bylaw and just highlighting all of the, the new things or even just some things that maybe aren't new in there, but that people should be aware of. So I'm going to talk to Cody about that, but I think we should probably run that through the entirety of the summer. And then probably into fall, winter, all year round, when all the other things are happening. Now that we've got the go-ahead with our corporate business plan, I'll be posting that to the website and that will be emailed out to all of our GMs and managers so that everybody can continue to follow that. And then following council's decision this afternoon, I'll be putting together a joint communications piece on the recreation cost sharing agreements. I'm assuming after we get confirmation that the county passes this next week. And that kind of wraps it up for communications for me, if there's any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Stone? Counselor Evans?
Me? Water Disconnect Program?
Yes.
Is that trying to keep eaves troughs out of our sewer?
Yeah, the, the downspouts. Because some people have their downspouts directly connected to like the reaping tiles and then it connects to our things and.
Gotcha. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. Water Disconnect, I thought was, wasn't quite sure. I figured.
There was a disconnect on where, where, where the, where it was.
I'd like people to be connected to water. Just not flow back into ours. Thanks.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much for that. Moving on to council reports, 7.1, Counselor Sheriff.
You're up. So the street summer kickoff was really a lot of fun. I got a lot of really good feedback from public about it. Then we had the Community Standard Bylaw Planning Meeting. That was very informative. And I think the highlight of my week was the graduation. We had two graduates in this, in our house this year. And there was a lot of people there. It was really, really good to see.
Well, thank you very much for that. Deputy Mayor McGee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a, a, an interesting conversation with the Minister of Justice, Tyler Shandro, around the RCMP. The UCP continues to, to make or attempting to make headway in trying to convince folks that that's a good place for us to go is to get our own police force in Alberta. I think there's value in, in having broader discussion and, and keep an open mind. Although I, I know that many, many communities, whether they're rural or, or urban like ourselves, are, are not in favor at all. I think it's as high as 80%, but they continue to, to run that program. And we'll see if they're able to, to manage. The other thing is we had the Public Service Barbecue, which was a ton of fun. It was really great to see our staff out enjoying some food and having, having us sort of cooking, I, I think was really, I, I think, set the stage for more of them, in my view. It's just more time for us to get together. Because sometimes it's, there's so many and it's far-reaching. You don't, you forget, oh yeah, there's a group over there, there's a group over there. How many actually work for the town? And so when we have our Canada Day celebration, it would be nice. And I think we talked about having maybe some of the new moors out and get the young kids out burning around. And it could be quite a bit of fun. The last thing was the downtown street party. I, I went with my wife, which I think is the right thing to do. But she, she wanted to stay till the end, so we did. And it was, it was, it was a ton of fun. And the lights were on and I took some pictures that, that I sent away to the kids saying, look what's happening in Drayton Valley. The, the group that put it on worked hard and worked hard right through till cleanup time. And till the next morning, I did a ride through just to see what was going on and they were still working, just picking it up. And it was, it was a ton of fun and I was, I was pleased to be part of it. Although I did miss some folks because of the rain. folks because of the rain, but it was, it was great fun. That's it. Oh, I should mention the, I also went to a graduation. And it was a graduation of about, I think, eleven of our, our students that were trying to work hard to get their GDPs. So I, I think the mayor will report on it because she spoke there. She did a wonderful job. We also had Donna Willsey, the Reeve, speak and it was, it was outstanding because it was really powerful. Yeah, first class. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Councillor Gomana.
Thank you. June 16th, had the opportunity to go to Red Deer with our mayor to, to the municipal, attend the Municipal Leaders Caucus there. And we had the opportunity to go through what Alberta municipalities have in plans for the next year and how they are going to restructure their organization as well. So that was good to get out there after a while. Also, 17th Public Service Week Barbecue was very well attended and organized. So thank you for the administration for that. 20th, met with Pembina Pipeline for a discussion here at the boardrooms. It was a good discussion and to see what their plans and how we can help. 21st, Pembina Fish and Recruitment Meeting. It was great to see that there's interviews happening and then there's doctors coming here and, and checking out our community to move here. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll have some new doctors coming here. 23rd, as Tom mentioned, the GD Grad Program. It was great to see that eleven students graduating. Nice stories there. Our mayor did a fantastic speech as well as Deputy Mayor, Deputy Reeve, Donna Willsey. I was very heart touching speech. 24th, Community Foundation Summer Kickoff Party. Unfortunately, it was raining. It was very well organized, well attended up until the, the point it rained. So it was cold. But hopefully the, the next one will be even better. 26th, we had the Rotary Club of Drayton Valley's Change Hour Meeting. I have the opportunity to be the, the president for the next year for Rotary Club of Drayton Valley. Another responsibility, I guess. So hopefully it'll go, go well this year with, we can have more functions and events and all that for Rotary Club. 28th, we had the Shangri-La Lodge Visit. It was nice to connect with seniors again and understand their, I guess their needs and ambition for, for our town as well. So it was, it was a great opportunity to, to connect with them again as well. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councillor Clark?
Yeah, I'm going to regurgitate to a bunch of what some others said. ECDC Barbecue, attended that. That was really good. I got to see a bunch of their smiling little faces there. Attended that meeting with Pembina Pipeline as well. I think that was good and I think that's kind of the start of many to come. They'd like to engage with us. You know, I think I've been in that facility once in my life. So it was good to actually get a tour of it and see what, what it was about. They're doing some cool things there. They're making the facility a little more versatile, you know, including some suites there. So they're combining multiple rooms together to get kind of married couples and such in there. So that's, that's good. Make it a little more versatile. And then they're also doing a ton of work there for the parking, which will make it just more accessible for the larger trucks to do their drop offs and stuff there. So that was good to see. Did a noble growth tour as well. There's a couple of things there. It's impressive. They're doing some cutting edge stuff there that, you know, they're doing some things there that's not being done very widely. So, you know, they're exporting stuff to Germany and stuff like that. So pretty, pretty cool stuff. I'll wait for that. That's it for now.
All right. Thank you very much. Councillor Evans?
Well, not sure if I have much to add. When you go last, everybody covers a lot of it. But had a Healthy Communities Coalition meeting on the 21st and just went over some sort of how we're going to structure stuff moving forward for initiating projects, et cetera. It was nice to have an in-person meeting for a change that hasn't happened for a while. We also had a lady who came up from Rocky Mountain House who kind of went over what they're doing down there, mostly for women's shelter that she operates and how they're running that and, and also for families as well, women with, with kids who need to get out of a dangerous situation, obviously. So again, you know, good, good information, good experience to draw from in the future. What else did I do? Yeah, the ECDC Father's Day Barbecue, I attended with a few of the other councillors and yes, a lot of fun when you've got a bunch of little kids running around, eating burgers and having fun and just kind of hanging out with their fathers and parents. It's, it's always enjoyable just to sit back and people watch a little bit and build a few hamburgers and have a few interesting conversations with those little minds. Had a Library Board meeting on the 23rd. Again, just going over stats mostly, et cetera, talking about looking at what they might do for a security system in there, just a, a simple couple of cameras, just to keep people honest, mostly with harassment issues, stuff like that. I, I lent them a little camera, lapel camera, just to try and not sure if that's going to fly or not. But they're also looking at a simple system right at the front there. And I'll also work with Public Works and through Robb, we're going to start storing some of the tons of excess books that they, that they have there from when they consolidated the two libraries, just to try and give them a little more breathing room. So I'll, I'll work with Doug there and also with Owen, just to kind of schedule that. I'll try and give them a hand. Maybe we'll build a couple of skids full of books that they can, they can hang on to until they're moved somewhere with a little more room. And I think that is about it. Unfortunately, I missed the Shangri-La visit. I was, I was working, but I would have enjoyed attending that as well. I think that's about all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much for that. For myself, yeah. Public Service Barbecue, Works Barbecue was really fantastic. Great to see all the Public Works there and the great job that they're doing in the community. I attended National Indigenous People's Day at Rotary Park. It was fantastic. Yeah, thank you to the town and the, the Métis Youth Culture Society as well. They put that on. I think that they served over 600 burgers or something that day and had dancers and everything. So it was really nice. Great to see the community getting involved. And I think it was, all the schools came out that day. So it was nice. And the, and the weather was beautiful. So they were in the water park and everything. So it was really a nice day. Lots of graduations that happened in June. I attended Holy Trinity Academy Outreach, Frank Matic High School and Community Learning. Those were all fantastic. All, I thought I would only cry at HTA as my daughter was graduating, but no, I cried at a couple more. As, as Tom and Amela said, it was wonderful. Donna Willsey from the county gave an amazing speech and she shared a little bit of, of part of her story and her life with all of us there. And it was very brave of her. And yeah, it brought a lot of tears. I, I was at the back of the room bawling. And, and I just really appreciate and want to thank her for sharing her story with us because it was amazing. And she touched a lot of people in the room and I think gave a lot of people courage. So kudos to her. Fantastic job. We attended, yeah, Shangri-La. It was great to see, great to get out because it's really been a difficult last couple of years for our seniors particularly. So they've been very isolated. So to be able to see them and out and enjoying lemonade on the patio and, you know, socializing and everything is fantastic and really excited, of course, when it comes to budget. I have some ideas that I will be pushing. I'm always pushing for the seniors because we're always aging and I think that they are important people in our community. There are a lot of the members in our community that have really shaped Drayton Valley. So it's important to take care of them and, and to listen what their needs are. And I think their asks are pretty small. So I'll be excited to see proposals coming forward and I'll be pushing for those very strongly, I'm sure with a few others for some paths and lights and other things. So very exciting. A few of us had the opportunity to also attend the barbecue and the grade five visit at the Ricochet Oilfield Corp. They had different stations set up from different companies and it kind of showed you how the whole oil field, the production and industry works. So the grade fives got to move from station, station to station. And then there was a barbecue and everything. So that was really nice to see as well. Just been out visiting the businesses. And yeah, it's been a busy couple of weeks. We were just here reporting and of course, it's been jam packed. So hopefully everybody will be out on Canada Day celebrating and looking forward to it. Hopefully that the rain will hold off and we'll be able to have sunshine in the parade and for some of the events, looking forward to it and jumping into summer. Hopefully the, the weather will be nice for us as well. And that wraps up everybody's council reports and we'll move into council items. Eight point one, are there any council standing items? I don't think so. If nothing's listed here, that means not, right? Eight point two, any upcoming meetings and/or conferences for any councillors?
I'm not able to make it tonight with that Warehouser Timberland Symposium.
Okay, yeah.
Does anybody go into that one?
Oh, you're going to go?
I can't make it.
Perfect. Okay, good. Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, for sure.
At CTC at six o'clock.
Yeah. Okay. Are you going to, Rick? Okay, good, good. Okay, yeah, I can't make it either. I have a couple other engagements. It would seem to be a busy Wednesday. All of a sudden, there was so much going on tonight. So it's nice that we'll have some representation there. Anything else going on? If anybody's attending? I think it gets kind of quiet with summer coming.
There's the Warehouser tour next week.
Warehouser tour, do we have next week? So we have the FCSS, as Hans had mentioned, tour is on Monday.
Monday, yeah.
And then... When did you say? When is the?
On Wednesday.
Oh, it's on Wednesday. Council Tour of Warehouser, is everybody able to make that?
No, it's at 10:30.
It is at 10:30. I can never tell on my phone, Bree. Are there notes with that? I'm just wondering which building we go to when we're there. Is it Timberlands? Is it, is it C? I'm bringing it up. It doesn't say. So it's Matt Snow. Where's Matt? Is he in Timberlands or is he in the OSB? Is he the OSB? Okay. Sure, sure. And then I'm assuming they'll have with the tour hats and vests? Or we have to bring that? Okay, if you could just confirm and then if not, we'll have to bring all of our own to go to that visit. Okay, perfect. Did you have something else, Monica?
Oh, yeah, nope.
Oh, you too, Colleen? Sure, go ahead.
Looking at my calendar here, I'm not going to be here for it, but the, the reside program on July 6th. Looks like a meeting?
Yeah, that's a meeting with Amarek, I think his name is, from the reside. That's to discuss, discuss the doctor shortages and Drayton Valley potentially coming, I think it's a level, level one. We're currently a level three and be a level one where there's more funding and there's more opportunity to fill those vacancies for doctors because it's your level ones that seem to be getting the doctors and those positions filled, the shortages filled there rather than the level three. So I think some of our questions, hopefully, will be able to be answered there. No, we postponed that. Yeah, we did postpone that. Just because I had sent out messages and no one replied. So I was like, I thought, okay, well, we'll put it off. We can book again in July. We'll book another date. Once Tabina is back, we can talk about that and plan another date. Okay, any committee updates that haven't been given already in our reports?
Oh, committee updates?
Yeah.
Yes. Sorry, homelessness forums. We had our last facilitated session. What we've decided is the path forward, that is for me to take it forward. All the materials from the previous sessions will be sent to myself and then, you know, we'll be looking to continue those. I think our next one is August 19th or something like that. So we'll look at getting all those groups back to the table, kind of the end of summer here and keep it going.
Perfect. And was that the last day for the consultant?
Last day for the consultant, last facilitated session.
Okay, so, okay. So we'll continue forward with...
Yeah.
Are you facilitating the ones moving forward? Okay.
Chairing them, I guess.
And, or chairing them, I guess. It'll just be a meeting with all the same people at the table?
Yep.
Oh, wonderful. Perfect.
Yeah. And I guess the other thing is maybe we should chat some point about the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Committee and what that looks like going forward. So we get that on an agenda here at some point.
We've had a conversation administratively and Community Services is preparing a report for council's consideration.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Nothing else for committee updates? Eight point four, what happened this week, various thoughts and ideas. Anything that really got you and you forgot to mention or need to get out?
Okay, for me to go. So when we did go to Shangri-La, a couple of things that popped up there. One, walking path by Shangri-La. So there, there's a path that goes up to Shangri-La and then it just ends. And then we, we also chatted kind of, Amela and Nancy and I, and there's actually a couple of those around town that they just stop. So, you know, our thoughts are, can administration maybe take a look at what those are and are their plans or, or were they just sort of missed over time or what the deal was there?
Speaking of that, Colin, Dana Sharp-McLean sent us something. What was that for?
That was Blue Cross was going to give $50,000 grants to municipalities. It was to do with like being active, just anything related to activity. So that would, that would fit the criteria.
Yeah, I'm just wondering when we were there, like I think Denise will be bringing a proposal forward to us in September because there aren't, there, that road is being constructed right now to kind of have a, a through road. And then once that's done, they're kind of envisioning as that sidewalk comes off, it's kind of like just a trail through the path. They would like that then to be actually paved. So then people with wheelchairs or walkers, because they're doing it now and it's very uneven and things like that. So they envision that as being a trail going around and then connecting with the, the one through to Beelands there, that trail. And they were even saying like a nice little, maybe a fountain there with some benches and just really all this nice. So then we were just, I was like, well, we're all getting old. So what about a Starbucks? What about... And I'm like, we need to envision this here. This, so maybe this would be your active living or, or something, right? I think you forwarded that, that grant application or did it go to Hans?
I did see it and I forwarded it out to the SLT.
Oh, okay.
To see how we might be able to capitalize.
If we could, maybe, yeah, something like that. But yeah, that was a great...
Notice the, the building too, right? The, the well site. And if we could work with Ricochet on, on what their plans are. I think they would be one of the ones, companies that would come out and could, we could work through all of that deadfall and stuff that's in there. That would be, I think they would be very receptive. It's just a matter of, you know, where my concern always is, is that when we push too hard, right? We're got, got this going on, that going on, that going on. But I don't know. It's the, sometimes I, I don't want to over, over ask.
Yeah.
But I think they would be there. And so it just needs to be on the list that you're preparing to go out.
Yeah, perhaps we could add that to the list because when we share that with Ricochet is that little park because they have an abandoned well there that they'll be taking care of. So if we could add the beautification area to Shangri-La, so then when they're looking, they can pick, that might be something that might stand out for them too, right? Certainly. And like, I think it was Amela that said, like, this is the heart of our community, right? Like it's, it's the center right there. So and that's where your seniors are. Wouldn't that be nice if there was this little, you know, beautiful little park or just nature area back in there with, you know, where you could just sit and...
Be nice. Councillor Gomana?
Thank you. Couple of things. I guess the first one, we talked about the, the sign out there. That's nice, but not visible. So that's one thing. The second one, when you come from St. Anthony's, you know, that intersection, if you're coming from not the 50th, but on the other street, there's two dips, you know, there's, people are complaining if they're coming faster, they, they might even go off. You know, there's, people are complaining if they're coming faster, they, they might even go off road because there's two big dips there. And so I'm not sure if there's anything that we can do about it.
So are those on the...
So 50th and then you're coming from, we are, you're passing St. Anthony's?
33rd?
Coming to the intersection?
43rd, I think it is.
43rd.
Okay. I think Alvera knows what I'm talking about.
Alvera knows because Alvera's the one speeding through there hitting us.
So you know, it's like bump, bump, right? And then, you know, if, if you're coming 40 or 40, just, yeah, you might go off road.
I, I know.
Your friend's going.
If it is a school day, no problem, right? You know, you have to go 30. But if it is not, if, if people are not going on a normal speed, then it's a problem.
So I think Cody needs to set up some sort of speed, something there. If he's, is he still here?
Yeah.
Or rap?
I know, I know that Owen's been in close contact with the contractor on site there. So I think it's just a matter of us having a conversation about whether we need some increased signage or maybe we need to consider a reduced speed limit. And tell, because I think the, the bumps that people are talking about is where they've cut the utilities in. They've cut the asphalt. So until we repair the asphalt, those, those will be there. But I'll have Owen follow up with the contractor and, and see what can be done there.
This is the corner of 50th and 43rd.
Okay.
Got it? You captured it?
It's on Owen's list.
It's on Owen's list. Add it to the list. Sure, Rick?
Just one small addition. I've, I've had two people on my block complain to me about people speeding. Now, I don't know, Tom, you guys got any plans on, on setting anything up on, on the side residential roads? What should I be telling those folks? I told them to, if they could get a picture and I would forward it to, to, to you guys. But I'm not sure if you can actually phone somebody and just say, hey, we saw you or you've been spotted speeding. Like, could you give them a warning like that? Give me some advice, Tom.
It is actually right beside Rick's house. You just have to turn it the other way now because it's pointing this way. So if you can just turn the trailer the other way facing down, you're...
Yeah, it's, it's kind of around the corner for me. But I, I think a lot of it is just the, a lot of the time, it's, it's, you know, kids coming up from the school as well. And they could take any one of those two or three roads and they just get a little carried away there. But yeah, the trailer is right around the corner from, from my place or has been right before that, that trail there. Okay, thanks. Yeah, just wanted to ask the question.
Wonderful. Just a couple of questions for Owen. One, 43rd there, there was a request that street, street cleaning or street sweeping could happen once a week as the construction phase. That's a go ahead now that, has, has the lines been painted? Because I did reach out and just reach out to him to say that it wouldn't happen. I think it was last week because there was line painting that was supposed to happen? Once a week? Perfect. Perfect. Okay, so line painting will be happening very soon, weather permitting?
And, and I was out on Monday and the first of the weekly street sweeping at that intersection occurred.
Okay, perfect. Wonderful. Yeah, when I had communicated with the gentleman again, he said, no, I'm happy with once a week and, and weather permitting. And I said, okay, perfect. And then to 43rd, did you look into also when we're talking about speeding there? When you're coming from the hospital about a crosswalk, maybe perhaps going in there? There was lots of people from that little cul-de-sac, just secure a park, right? Between the hospital. So you're coming through there and then there's no sidewalk, but then you're getting onto the trails and there's no crosswalk or, or nothing. So when line painting happens, that will be slated? Perfect. Okay, wonderful. Okay, if there is nothing else, then that wraps up the council items. And we'll move into information items, June 29th, 2022. We have the action tracking sheet. We have the letter from Wildrose School Division to Minister of Health, letter from County of St. Paul regarding increasing utility fees and letter from Village of Breton. Is there a member of council that would like to receive these and make a motion as information? Counselor Gomana, all in favor? That is carried and we will adjourn the meeting at 3:03 PM.